Good evening and welcome to the June 5th meeting of the East Point City Council. Madam City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Trapchar, Councilmember Robertson, Councilmember Renee, Councilmember Bailey, Councilmember Cummings, Councilmember Cook, Councilmember Butler, Councilmember Gordon. Mayor Holliday Ingram, we have a call.
Thank you so much. Tonight, we will stand for a moment of silence followed. So I'm being told we have a minister from Impact Church here with us this evening. I don't see it on the agenda. Good evening, what's your name? Press the button for me.
Sheila Bates.
Sheila Bates?
Yes.
Okay, are you minister?
I am Reverend Sheila Bates.
Oh Reverend, okay. We will have our invocation by Reverend Sheila Banks of Impact Church, followed by the pledge to the flag. Please stand.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to call together your people for this meeting. We thank you for everyone who has gathered here tonight. God, you have blessed us with this day and you have blessed us with civility. You have blessed us with a supportive community who seek the best for your people and the environment for which we live. You are all about our welfare and we pray that your Holy Spirit will guide us always. Lord, we ask that you satisfy the needs that need to be met during this meeting. We ask that you strengthen us as we make tough decisions. We ask that we are all like a well-watered garden, like a spring whose waters never fail. We pray that on this night, we will be fruitful and not fearful. We pray for unity and not division throughout the duration of this meeting and then the days to come. We pray that your will is done as we commit this time to you. We pray that you plan our course and set the stage for decisions based upon your wisdom and not ours, resulting in lives being transformed and community needs being met. We pray that we are not only doing good for this community, but also for your kingdom. May you give clarity where needed. May you inspire productive discussions with less ego and more collaboration. We pray, Lord God, that you bless this meeting with grace and creativity, with love and peace as we open our hearts to honor you in all that we do and say. May the words that permeate this space be respectful and wise. And Lord God, we pray your presence, your Holy Spirit presence in this place so that those here will feel safe and heard. Thank you for your grace and your mercy and your love. In Christ's name we do pray. Amen. To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Thank you so much Reverend Banks. Our sergeant at arms this evening is Captain Robinson. Thank you for your service this evening. And before we get into presentations and announcements, June is National Pride Month. And so we want to say happy Pride Month to our amazing LGBTQIA+ community. Thank you for your contribution and substantial impact into moving our city forward. We're greatly appreciative. And of course, we know every day is a celebration of our diversity. But this month is National Pride Month. And we're having an event this Saturday, Drag Down South Legends. So The Possums is returning. My daughter has a softball tournament in Oxford, Alabama this weekend. So unfortunately, this will probably be the first one I've missed since being here in the city. But I'm sure it will be an amazing, fun time by all and for a good cause. The first presentation or the only presentation we have tonight is... Running for something. The first presentation that's tonight is Intruder Affidavit, Immediate Action to Remove Squatters from Councilmember Gordon and Councilwoman Butler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Per request of the police chief, he'd like to add this item to the policing update. The affidavit is just another tool we hope to put in our chest regarding the removal of squatters. And it's something that homeowners can, property owners I should say, can utilize in working with the Fulton County Sheriff's Department. And our police department can also aid in that. So we'll want to move that to the work session per the chief's request.
The June 12th work session?
Yes, I'm sorry.
All right, next presentation is Veterans Empowerment Organizations, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Recently during the National League of Cities, which was, I thought, one of the most productive trips of unity for our council members, we came across, and I have been championing it and others, for the unhoused and unsheltered. And in understanding where East Point wants to go in this, I wanted to make sure that we continue to reach out and meet valuable resources. So I am so happy to bring on the Veterans Empowerment Organization, Mr. Morgan Moore. Step on up. Thank you, young man.
All right, good evening. Just press that button right there on the mic. There you go.
I should have learned from the first one, right? First off, thanks for having me. I'm just here to do a little bit about Veterans Empowerment Organization, what we do. So we're a veteran-run nonprofit. We're not in East Point. We are a close neighbor though. We're over in Grove Park. But we do everything from transitional to permanent housing for homeless veterans. Right now, we have 20 transitional beds for veterans. They are fully, fully full, they're, we are full right now. Currently, we have 23 of our 41 apartments already filled. But what we are is we're a connector of resources when the, within the veteran space here. That doesn't just stay in Grove Park. That extends to East Point. That extends College Park to Hayville, all the towns nearby. But what we do on our campus is we do have a full Veteran Service Center. All of those resources that we have come in are available to not only those veterans that are in transitional and permanent housing on our campus, they're also available to all community veterans. So what we do is we invite different organizations to come in. We have a few different training rooms. Some of them as large as 25 to 30 people in the training room. We invite them to come to our campus, set up satellite offices, set up workshops, whatever they need, and whatever the veterans are looking for. So putting out surveys, figuring out what's important to veterans in the area here. But all of that will get put out to the Atlanta community. So we invite, we invite veterans all around, not just the ones that are in our care. But definitely want to continue the unsheltered-to-housed initiative here with East Point and just be a connector of resources where I can see.
Thank you so much for all that your organization does. I don't know if you want to share the contact information? If you have public information, you can just say it for the record so that everyone would have it.
Absolutely, thanks for asking. So the phone number for our campus is 404-889-8710. You can also go to our website, V E O hero.org. There's a contact sheet there as well that'll get to my team.
Awesome. Councilmember Robertson and Councilmember Cummings.
I yield for Cummings and then I'll, I'll close up.
Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, thank you so much for your presentation. Let me get that web address again.
Yeah, it's V E O. That's Victor Echo Oscar, hero.org.
And where's your campus located? Where's that campus located?
So we're on West Lake Avenue between Not Only Hollowell and Joseph E. Boone. It took me about 18 minutes to get here.
Okay, and should we encounter, we come across those veterans?
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
Just to come across these veterans, you, we could reach out to you at this number here? Or is there intake process from the website or?
So the best avenue right now is to fill out the contact form online. So if you're doing that on behalf of a veteran, that goes right to my team and starts that case management process. And if, and if, like I said, right now, we are full for transitional. But if we're not this space, we work with a lot of other organizations that do transitional housing. Some of those have fully dedicated veteran programs. Some are just unsheltered. So we can definitely connect them if you send them our way.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Councilmember Renee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really think this is a great program. And I think, I really wanted to add this because I worked at Job Corps. We worked right alongside of you guys for a long time. And one of the critical things that came out of VO was, a lot of times you have homeless veterans and, and they're not getting their disabilities or their fundings that they're needed, right? And so what this community would do is, they will bring in homeless veterans so that they can have an address. Because you can't get a check if you're trying to apply for disabilities or any kind of funding. So their organization is extremely critical because they help with the medical assistance and making sure that veterans are taken to the VA hospital and not just housing. They also make sure they have food and clothing and a lot of the other great things. I noticed, because I still drive by there quite often, that you guys are building a new office and more housing for your campus. How many beds do you hold right now?
So right now, we have 20 beds amongst 10 rooms. So the VA has a double occupancy for transitional housing. They are moving to a single occupancy initiative. So we're building 20 more rooms attached to our newest building. We just removed the building we had, that was our original campus from the 50s. That one just came down. That's going to be extra parking. But we're expanding our campus there. With 20 more beds, it'll take us to 30.
I think it's absolutely awesome. And thank you, Councilman Robertson, for bringing this to the council. Because so often when we run across homeless people, a lot of them are veterans and a lot of them are dealing with some mental health issues. And so this is a great way for us to kind of help navigate that. And I also have known them to, if they can't house them, they will assist with housing somewhere else or redirect them. Thank you for your service and your work. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Councilmember Robertson.
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. And this organization has really already helped the city of East Point. And I got contacted recently from a resident that had a squatter and he got kicked out. And he realized that the gentleman was a veteran and had some mental health issues. And the way it was explained to me from your organization, if they have a honorable discharge and they pass a tuberculosis test and a COVID test, you will definitely get them in the program and try to get them off the streets. Is that correct?
So as long as they don't have a dishonorable. So there, there's a lot, there's a lot of other ones between honorable and dishonorable. With dishonorable, we can, we can still connect them. But right, right now, that's one of our cutoffs. But it is, it does require a tuberculosis test and RPR, which is just a test for syphilis. That needs to be in the last 90 days prior to them coming. Can't bring them into the program without those negative results.
Thank you so much. I already make sure that staff is reaching out to them as we build and try to structure the inside program that we're doing. Thanks again and I yield, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan. Absolutely, thank you again for having me.
Hold on, just one moment. We have one more. Councilmember Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm not going to put you on the spot. I'm going to make the request kind of simple. What really caught my news a couple of weeks ago was how veteran, veteran housing is being attacked by the need for housing for migrants, migrant borders. And you didn't say anything about this. So I'm going to assume that the ability to maintain your census is not being challenged by non-veterans.
It is not. So we, we do have a system as part of our intake. It's provided by the VA that allows us to go into the system and verify that, that veteran status prior to coming in.
That was a great answer, thank you.
Absolutely. All right, thank you all.
Thank you so much. Next up, do we have any committee reports? Councilmember Cook or Councilmember Butler?
I'll be brief. The Budget Committee, Budget Finance Committee was able to have a meeting in the month of May. And we were fortunate in that during this time period, things looked pretty good for closing the year and in a very strong balanced state. As of April, we had received 99% of the revenue anticipated we would receive for the general fund. Yet we've only processed 74% of the anticipated expenses. Now that's a control measure there too, because this time of the year, city manager really tightened the screws on outflowing funds to make sure that we don't have any problems closing the year. And realize that we've only got a couple of days left before fiscal year 23 is done. And hopefully tonight, we'll be well-prepared for fiscal year 24. Madam Mayor, that summarizes my report.
No report from the HR Committee.
Next up is adoption of the council agenda. Is there a motion? Yes, Councilmember Renee.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to open the floor. I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I don't know what to do. I'd like to make a motion to approve the city council minutes from May 15, 2023. Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
So your motion to approve the city council minutes got a second. So can you, can you withdraw that motion and then we'll make the motion on the agenda?
I apologize. I would like to withdraw the motion.
Okay. Can we get a motion to approve the council agenda?
Second. A motion to approve the city council agenda. Second still.
It's been moved and properly seconded any discussion on the adoption of the council agenda. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the city council minutes from the May 15 regular meeting?
Yes. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the city council regular meeting, May 15, 2023, at 6:30 PM.
Second.
Been moved and properly seconded any discussion. All those in favor? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up, public hearing. And I'm city attorney, if you can read the rules.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Public hearing procedures before... I didn't have it up, I apologize. Madam Mayor, this is the public hearing on the, sack of reading of the proposed budget.
Yes.
It's going to be rule 18. I just need to find the correct rule. I apologize, I pulled up the wrong rule. Here. Here we go.
It's Rule 29.
Rule 29. Trying to pull the text up, but my computer's acting kind of wonky. I apologize. Couldn't help if I connected it to Wi-Fi instead of my hotspot. I apologize. Here we go. Public hearings shall be advertised as per ordinance. The presiding officer will call for a motion to open and close the hearing. Those in favor of the subject will speak first for a total of 15 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to not more than three minutes. Those who oppose the subject will then speak for a total of 15 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to not more than three minutes, to no more, not more than three minutes. Speakers may give a total of three minutes to another speaker after all of those present have had an opportunity to speak. Residents will be given first, first priority to speak. After all residents have been given the opportunity to speak, non-residents may speak. By majority of vote, the council may, may increase the total time for each side of the subject to a total of 30 minutes per side. Each side will be given the same amount of time. Speakers must adhere to the rules of the call. My apologies for the delay, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
No problem, thank you so much. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing? Councilmember Cook.
Madam Mayor, I move that we open the public hearing for the 20, fiscal year 24 budget.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and properly seconded any discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is now open. Mr. King, I'll turn it over to you for a brief presentation from staff before adhering those for or against.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and welcome to our guests who are here this evening as well, our residents. I want to bring up our acting finance director, Shannon Golden, who'll give a very brief overview for us before we go into the public hearing. Shannon?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager, Deputy City Manager, City Attorney, and citizens. For the FY24 budget, we are projecting revenue of $191,396,102. As you can see, for the general fund, we are projecting $57,225,348. Projected expenditures balance out the budget for the general fund of $57,225,380. Our condemn fund at $200,000, E911, $1,527,160. We have restricted grants at $11,243,90. With our police grants, we also have $72,034. Our corridors TAD at $525. With our Camp Creek TAD, we paid our Camp Creek TADs, so we don't have a Camp Creek TAD for FY24. Our hotel motel budget for FY24, we're projecting revenues of $4,625,000. Urban redevelopment agency, we have $298,000. With our auditorium redevelopment fund, we're projecting $7 million deaths with funding, with proposed bond funding. CIP for the year is $2,427,707. We have T-Splash for FY24 of $14,589, $89,741, I'm sorry. 50 worst at $866,690. Our saw construction fund, which is just our debt that we pay on the city hall, $655,000. Water and sewer, $32,485,000. Electric is sitting at $49,297,705. Our stormwater fund, we have projected $2,490. And for our solid waste fund, we're projecting $5,843,362. For our general fund, FY24 budget with city council, city clerk, we're projecting $2.4 million. Our executive is $6,449,13. For our administrative services for general fund, we're projecting $15,668,453. Judicial is $1.4 million. Police, $16,626,552. And with our fire department, we are projecting expenditures of $8,243,194. Public works, we're projecting $2.3 million. With our parks and recreation, we're projecting $1,906,847. And with our planning and community development, $1.9 million. And economic development sitting at $830,472, which for our general fund for FY24 would be $57,225,348. And that's the end of my short presentation. We want to go over the ordinance or opening?
I'll have people speak now. Open up the hearing and see if there's anyone who wants to speak. And thank you for your presentation. Anyone who wants to speak in favor of the proposed FY24 budget for the city of East Point? Anyone who wants to speak in favor of the proposed FY24 budget for the city of East Point? Anyone who wants to speak in favor? There anyone who wants to speak in opposition to the proposed FY24 budget of the city of East Point? Any, you have to come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have some various concerns about some of the items that I've been looking through the proposed budget and...
Please state your name for the record, please.
Keith Thane, I represent Center Park Neighborhood Association. I live at 1760 Vesta Avenue. We have some various concerns about the proposed budget. I see some salary increases and some additional activities, festivities, parties. And I'm really concerned about that when we have other needs and concerns. As far as safety, parks, recreation for our youth, making sure our safety and fire department are adequately funded. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the FY24 proposed budget?
Good evening. My name is Anna. I live at 2187 Newton Street. And I appreciate just the complexity of that budget. I have a comment mostly the property taxes. My main concern here is that the budget sets up for, sets us up for another property tax increase. So per, oops. So I think, my understanding is that by regulation, the property taxes needs to be, should be net neutral so that when you, the next year, when you calculate the taxes, you should not get more taxes. And so, so in order to, you should get the same amount of revenue independent of increases to inflation or new, or improved properties. And if you do want to, sorry, can you hear me or is it my accent? Or is it my just structure of speaking?
So your accent is beautiful. But when, if, when you move... So your accent is beautiful, um, but when, if, when you move kind of back and forth from the mic, we can, it kind of goes in and out, so like...
Okay, I'll try.
Yep.
Um, so if, um, if there is, uh, an increase or intended increase, then there need to be three public hearings, which have, has happened in the past. So I, um, this year or last year, um, requested information about um, what the rollback rate is for the property taxes and then what, what the adopted mileage rate was for the property taxes. And, um, somewhere in the budget, there is a chart of the property tax, which shows an increase over time. And, um, I understand, okay, first point is that I think the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four is not even on the chart, which is another increase, which I think should be, um, actually, um, on the chart, so you have a full picture of where the property taxes actually should go. But also in the last ten years, um, property taxes have been increased, oh, no, sorry. The council has voted to increase the property taxes eight out of ten times, so not to, um, adopt the neutral rollback rate, but to adopt a higher mileage rate. And one year, there was no increase, and one year, there was actually a decrease. So my, long story short, um, so my concern is that, um, with the revenue projection actually including increased property values and inflation, the budget is already setting us up for another property tax increase come in October. So, um, so I want to, I would, um, appreciate if you work to consider just the income and if you are setting up the citizens who have a medium, a lower income than Fulton in general, um, yeah, if, if you're setting us up for another, um, profit tax increase. Um, and then there was in general also, um, looking at the budget, um, sometimes it appears that the goals of the department were not supported by the budget. For example, the tax department has, if I remember that correctly, um, less money, but their goal is to hire a new person, and so that seemed like a contradiction. And in other charts, it seemed that the graphs and the data, um, were not up to date, so I, my concern is that you, um, yeah, don't have, um, enough data for, um, good data. Or, and actually, you have good data, but, um, I know it takes a lot to pull the data from various departments and keep everything up to date and including the charts. And then, okay, last final, final point, very minor. Um, I saw that the police, um, requested speed guns, and they were not approved, and I was just wondering why there was a minor budget item that would help them fulfill their duties. Um, yeah, that was all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition of the FY twenty-four budget?
The acoustics in here are terrible. Can everyone hear me?
Important is your mic is working and we can hear you up here. You can go ahead.
You can hear me? Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Ernestine D. Pittman, former council member and mayor of East Point. First, I want to commend Mayor and Council for never voting on any of the events using the name of the council or individual council members as sponsor in a council meeting. You all knew that would have been a charter violation that would have been, uh, since the department, since the, uh, would have been a charter violation, since the department authorized to oversee the expenditures would have to be under the supervision of the city manager and not an individual council member. You also know that all procedures for expending the funds would have to go through the procurement process. Mayor and Council, do you know that it is a violation of the state's constitution and the city of East Point charter and related laws for public funds to be used by individual elected officials as his and her own personal bank funds to administer and manage events? The charter clearly states that mayor does not have any administrative, uh, managerial, uh, power, and neither does any council member. Mayor and Council, do you know that individual elected officials who spend any public funds for events are personally liable for every cent to include in-kind donations of public resources? Mayor and Council, I also ask you to have any member of the council to ask the city attorney for his opinion in writing for the questions posed above and provide the copy to the public. Mayor and Council, I ask you to join me in asking, um, residents, I ju, ask you to join me in asking the mayor and council to vote to remove all monies in their budgets for events to the non-departmental budget until they can determine a legal use for the money. I also have great objections for any city manager, a finance director, not following the state of Georgia outline in accounting for all budgets. I also object to the, uh, the terminology executive in the budget. The council has never voted on any department called executive. I also object to the name of office of equity, inclusion, and empowerment. Only the council can create department offices or agencies. That has not been done. That has not been done. And I totally object to the budget allotted to parks and recs that is less than the budget allotted to council members. Council members are only legally liable to have three items in their budget beyond their personal help and all that's required by the city. That's travel, training, and council ward expense. You are not required by law in order to be an elected official in Georgia, other than by age and residency. To have in your budget other professional fees, there are no other professional fees. Any training that you need will come from GMA or the National League of Cities, both of which the state, the charter requires the city of East Point to be a member. Any training that you would need to help you to perform your job up here can be gotten through Georgia Municipal Association that knows the state constitution, that knows all about what is going on in all departments according to state law. And you should know that by now. It is abominable that you would have over two million dollars in a council's budget for events and on a one point nine million dollars for parks and recs. In the city of East Point, we have one old recreation center that was given to us. After eight years, where is the recreation center? You talk about equity, inclusion, and empowerment. Where are the programs in parks and recs for those children ages two to eighteen? Pickleball in the city of East Point is for ages eighteen to twenty-five, and that's by fifty-dollar membership and open to anyone. Do you have any idea how many children there are in this city between the ages of twelve and eighteen? Liable to get in all kinds of trouble this summer because they have absolutely no place to go, no program, no programs in place. Why haven't you thought to work with Madeleine? And try to lease their gym of the church next door over here? Entire fellowship hall. Secondary. You don't, you, you don't care about the children. You don't care about the programs. Over there at Mill and the Park, we don't need any ghost pool. We need some real life facilities. My ten-year-old granddaughter can't go to something apart because Kaboom that we built thirteen years ago was for, for toddlers and smaller children. She's ten. I go over there. I can't ride a bike, a bike around the Vella Run. So what am I going to do? Look at the road that's with my name on it? No. It's, it's a shame. But you sit up here with four million dollars, seven hundred thousand dollars for jazz festivals. If you want to lose weight, stop eating. I'm so tired of these festivals coming here to East Point, and you're not bringing in the money. Where are the tangible benefits? Where are our tourists? The hotels over there welcome people coming to the city for family reunions. The AU, the old AU Center, the Clogmo High Spelman. People come in all the time to visit their children, and they stay here. East Point has always had the luxury of being a bedroom commuter to Atlanta. I sleep in East Point, and I do everything else in Atlanta. Because after living here forty-nine years, we still don't have a place for my grandchild to go to in East Point for a park. Yes, I oppose this budget, and I hope that you will move that money. And then to hear the Parks and Rec Director at the Zoom meeting say, I don't have money for the program. It's asinine. Where are the programs? Where is the equity? Where is the inclusion? Where is empowerment? It does not exist. And shame on all of us, residents as well as you. Because you need to reflect the people in this community. And if what you're doing there is a reflection of the people in this community, I can't wait to move out. But since I don't pay any taxes, and I'm off the tax roll, simply because I turned seventy-seven years ago, that too needs to change. Any family in this city with children in school, daycare, our own workers working for fifteen dollars an hour, swing out there picking up the garbage, public works every day. And then I look in this budget, we have positions for two votes. Never posted, doing absolutely nothing in an office of equity, inclusion, and empowerment that you didn't vote on. You need to take some of that money out of travel and training and go and get some training and find out what is going on in this city and address it. Oh, I'm not through. I might be through speaking here tonight. And I didn't wear my Angela Davis gray wig. Because in nineteen sixty-four, I was eighteen years old. I made a promise to those little girls in Birmingham. I made a promise to Megan Eggers. I made a promise to Dr. King on April the fourth, when I was pregnant and gave birth on May the eighteenth. I would not give up, and I'm not about to start now. It hurts my heart to see all you, your black faces up here. And for what your four parents and what some of you, Mary is the only one that's with no, same age I am. Why are you doing this? It's an embarrassment. And you're gonna have Juneteenth, and you don't have not one program for a child in this city ages twelve to eighteen. Not a single one. Shame on you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition of the FY twenty-twenty-four budget? Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing? So moved. Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to open the floor for discussion and possible action on the proposed FY twenty-four budget? Councilmember Cook, thanks for the motion. Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded any discussion? Since discussion, I'm opening the floor for discussion. Councilmember Gordon?
Sorry. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So we're in the motion to open the floor for discussion. I saw your name in, so you, are you wanting to discuss the motion to open the floor for discussion? Or you want to have a discussion? Okay, no problem. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. The floor is open for discussion. Councilmember?
Thank you. Thank you for those who came up tonight to speak their stance on the budget. Um, I have a few comments about the budget. Number one, one thing that has been a great concern to me is our compression issue and how we would address that once that compression study is completed, because we absolutely have issues with, uh, people who've worked for the city a long period of time versus those who have just started. And that compression that has resulted as we have, uh, increased our, our minimum wage back in, uh, I think it was twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. And how we would address that, considering the study has not yet been completed, and here we are preparing to, to vote on the budget. Um, I think in my conversation with the city manager, I don't want to speak out of turn, but because the study has not been yet completed, I believe that once that has been completed, if and when there's an amount to be considered to resolve or mitigate our compression, they, in fact, at that time, staff will come back for a budget amendment, uh, to address that, if that is deemed what we should do. If that's, is that correct?
So you can go ahead with your comments, Councilmember Gordon. When you're done, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Okay, thank you. A number of residents have reached out to me in my ward about, as some of the comments were raised tonight, the amount of the events in the budget. And if we are not amenable to discussing that in depth and maybe making some changes and all of us can reconsider some things, if we're not amenable to that, I will be voting on this budget tonight for the mere fact that there are a number of things that I feel we need to reconsider. Um, but that being said, yes, events in this budget that I think can definitely either be reconsidered, removed, or what have you. I know that the last speaker tonight did state, state laws. Uh, we've not asked the city attorney's office about the legalities of that yet, um, to either confirm or support what that's, what that's been, uh, what has been stated in that regard. I would like to know, um, for the sake of record, if we're doing things the wrong way, especially when we know that allocations are what the budget is made of. We know that if the police department's budget is passed, that before the police department can spend anything, they come before us to get those matters or those items approved. This is not about one event or one person. It's all of us. If we're doing it wrong, we need to do it right. If we're doing it right, then there's nothing to be said. But I definitely would like to once and for all know, one way or the other, for sure, what the law states in that regard. As we are spending money, I know other cities often do come back with budgets before they, um, approve. Uh, I know in my hometown in Tuscaloosa, the mayor's uh, weekly mantra is, it's now time to pay the bills. And with that comes budgets that are assigned to the allocations that want to be expended upon, so that's what I'd like to know. And I know I can't singularly get that without the vote and support of council to give a directive to the city attorney to confirm those for us. I also feel this way. I feel that this budget season flew by. I know typically in the past, you know, with COVID coming, COVID took up most of the last four years for us. Um, we've had to adjust to doing things a different way. But prior to COVID, I am accustomed to, before I was even on council, going to the meetings at the various locations and making comments about the budget. This particular year, we had an online meeting, and we had one meeting, I think, a week or so ago in city hall. Apparently, the attendance was low, but one- But one thing's for sure, the other side of the city didn't have an opportunity to meet. As I stated before, an old resident told me once, this is like a tale of two cities. Oftentimes, people on the C and D side don't come to this side that often, and vice versa. So I would have liked to have had more time for folks to be aware to attend a meeting, to get more in-depth information about this budget. We've, in May, and now tonight, had the two hearings and prepared to vote. As I stated, if the motion goes forward tonight to vote on the budget as is, my vote is a no, and these are my reasons why. Thank you.
Councilmember Renee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for all the comments that you made. I like to make a point here. The budget can always be amended. I think there were a lot of valid points that were said. And there is a lot of room in this budget where it can be adjusted at a later time. It's not esting stone. So the budget can be amended, and I think it will be amended to adjust and to reflect some of the things that the residents has indicated. I do want to address the property taxes, though. The lady that came out, she says eight out of 10 times we have increased the property taxes. Not true. Absolutely not true. Can we get somebody from, is Mr. Jackson, Madam Mayor? I don't know if the property tax man is here, but every time in the last-
I don't see him here. And so I'm going to have the city manager respond after all comments, as well as the city attorney after we go around.
Thank you. I want to make it clear that for the last 10 years, what this city council has been doing is rolling back the military, the last 10 years. So we have been adjusting, making sure that we understand the demographics of our residents and making sure that we're not overburdened some in taxing the residents. But I'll let the city manager address that issue because even last year, we had a robust conversation about how we can even adjust even more of our taxes for the people that have been really sweating it out for us, at least since 2008 and longer. And so we'll continue to do that. But our property taxes, this board has voted every year to roll back the military and to make sure that our taxes has not been increased. Now, Fulton County has increased the taxes, but not the city of East Point. The school board, there was a school board tax that was passed to give a 25% discount to seniors. And that was the first time ever that the school board has ever given anybody a discount. And no matter what age you get with the school board, they will, they has not really, like, come out and just gave a break or given a break to the residents. So the school board taxes has increased. Fulton County taxes has increased, but not the city of East Point. We rolled back our village rate to adjust. And that, we have done that for the last 10 years. But we'll let experts speak on that. And if I'm wrong, I'll stand to be corrected. I don't mind that. The other thing, roll back rates, we've done that. Let's see, what else? The salaries. We are, I think Mr. Dean came up, Keith Dean came up, to address the salaries for Park and Police Parks. The police department has the biggest budget, and we have addressed pretty much everything that they have asked for the police department, including in salary increases. In fact, last year, this council voted to increase one of the biggest salaries increases to attract more police officers. And we have done that. Not only have we done that, I think that we're a 99.9% full on our police department. I think we may have one or two more positions to fill. That is unheard of in this state or even in this country. Because most police departments can't find policing or cannot fill all of their positions. But our chief has done a great job in everything that he's asked for and this council has provided, has overwhelmingly and unanimously have voted for the police department to have all the equipment that they need. So I wanted to address that. For Park's salary and all of the other salaries for the cities, we're in a study right now, and that study has not been completed. I do think that our city employees, for a lot of the work that they're doing, I think they are overworked and underpaid. And I think that if you want good quality work, we have to bring more people in. But we also have to pay people a decent wage in this city. We cannot continue to pay our people sloppy wages and expect good results. So I give a little pushback on that because when I come here and I see a lot of the hard work that they are doing, I do have to say, a lot of them are educated and a lot of them are trained, but a lot of them are underpaid. And so I just wanted to address that. So Parks and Recreation. We are supporting Park and Recations, and I'm hoping that, I do know that we have several camps this summer coming out of Parks and Rec. And even the police department has a Park and Rec camp. No, I'm sorry. A camp that's coming out with the police. And Park is also having a camp with that. Can we do more? I'm hoping that we can. I hear you. I believe you. I think that we can do more, and I think that does make sense. We need to address a lot more and invest more in our Parks and Recs and with our students. Like I said, this budget can be amended. And I'm hoping that we will go back. After we pass this budget, we could go back, and then we can also take a look at how we can make sure that Parks and Rec is addressing the needs of our young people and continue to do that. I think you had some good ideas. I yield, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate that.
Councilmember Butler?
Thank you. I have a question for Shannon, if the city manager will allow this. I- So- Is it okay, city manager? I didn't see in the planning department, and this may be directed towards you, city manager. There, you and I, Kim, had spoken about some new positions in order to try to help shore up that planning and zoning department. But I didn't see whether we had allotted for any new positions that you and I and Kim discussed.
Yeah, actually, she was in the process of hiring. She has an assistant director, which we added. She also has two senior planners. One actually just started today, and Tyler McSwain. And so she was in negotiations with that. So those positions were there. And so Ms. Smith had been working out, trying to get those staff in. So she's gotten those positions in there. We may be bringing more. We know we're doing focus groups and things of that nature right now. But those positions are there. She wanted to get the persons that she wanted for those two positions for the planners. Got one in today. And then the senior, the assistant director, which she has, she's got some people she's looking to interview. So that's why-
It's in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes. The second question is for you, Shannon. I didn't see in the budget anything budgeted for a Ward D recreational center. Did I overlook it?
The requisite, is that the one that we have for? Yes, it is. It is there. And so they've actually met recently, the staff, which are assigned to that, the director of Parks and Rec, Laura Pink, has met with our staff. And they put, they have the RFP they're putting together. And so they actually met last week. They're finalizing that. So that is in there, in the budget. Thank you.
Councilmember Bailey?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. As a newly elected councilperson, I had a vision of serving. I'm newly retired from a school system. And I felt like those skills that I had would really transfer nicely into this role. And in that regard, it has in terms of building relationships with the residents, working with businesses. So I was on point with that. But what I wasn't on point with is the amount of work that this role requires in terms of talking to the residents and meeting their needs. What I'm hearing from residents is that they want just simple things, quality of services, excellent services. And so I probably talk to three and four residents a day through phone, through email, where they're contacting me and they're wanting excellent services in their city. That's all. That's what they want. So I'm hoping that this budget reflects the needs of the residents. When I was a district-level administrator, I believed that our schools felt like we were, that the district-level administrators didn't hear what the schools needed, what the families wanted. It was a disconnect. And unfortunately, I think I'm feeling the same way in this role. So basically, what residents need and what they're saying that they want, based on what I'm hearing, is quality of service through, through making sure that what they're seeing is beautified so that the grass is cut on a frequent basis, that litter is picked up, that when you walk downtown, you're not seeing trash, that your parks have workable equipment in the parks. Programs, which was mentioned earlier. Of course, I definitely support the programs that we have going here in the city. Definitely would like to see more. The permitting process is a huge problem. You can talk to a five-year-old, you can talk to a 15-year-old person, you can talk to a 55-year-old person. They seem to know about the eels of the permitting process. We've been talking about it. I've had it on the agenda for each and every work session. I just would like to see monies applied to whatever the residents are saying that they need. So the permitting process in terms of, I think we have a system or the computer system that we currently have. I think the director of the permitting process felt like that that could be updated. So I'm hoping that this budget does reflect that. And I think Councilmember Butler talked about positions in the permitting process. Hopefully, that we have that in the budget as well. So I just want the budget to kind of reflect what the residents are saying that they need, and it's just simple services. Seniors need support. Inflation, of course, is going up. And we're feeling a pinch as far as the property taxes. I actually didn't see where property taxes were going up. I would like to have more information about that. I think Ms. Anna brought that up. And it's just a lot of questions that I have regarding that. So I'm hoping that the city manager can address that. And that it was a good point as far as Parks and Recreation. Shalor does a great job there. And we can just, of course, hope to hear more programs and see more programs for our youth in this city. Thank you so much. I yield, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to also just champion reference to staff, the employees, those who are making the entry level about $15 an hour. We got to do better. We have to do better. We're losing employees to McDonald's. And this is a fact. Because they're making $4 to $5 more. A lot of departments in here are understaffed. We understand where the police are. We get that. But the other areas, other departments who's cutting the grass, who's out here emptying the trash, we need to make sure that those same people, when they go in their grocery store and buy those eggs, $5, $6, $7, making $15 an hour, let's figure a way to do better. Let's figure a way to incentivize them once, time or twice. I don't have an answer, but I know we have to do better because they're human beings just like we are. And they have to deal with the same things that we have to deal with from paying everyone our bills. And right now, if we can figure out a way to help incentivize the staff more, I think we will get from good to great. I yield, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Butler for a second time.
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll yield and let the first people go first. I think it may be-
At the time that your light was on, Councilmember Cook's button was not, his light wasn't on.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Cook?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few points. And I don't like dominating these discussions just because I'm on the budget committee. But one or two things I wanted to mention. First of all, as a relation to public safety, especially the police department, I'm not aware of the council denying any requests from the heads of those departments over the remaining year to include the police department. Anything that they've asked for, if it's made and available, they probably have it already. Or it's on the books now for one of the capital expenditures for fiscal year '24. The other thing that I want to make sure we all pay attention to, this budget has not skyrocketed in size from last year. In fact, the thing that's really amusing is that the one item that is basically double in size, almost, is the amount of revenue we anticipate receiving from T-Splash, where we're paving roads and adding sidewalks. And we're talking about living for the first two episodes, around $7 million, $7.9 million. Yet we anticipate for fiscal year '24, just for roads and sidewalks, which is something that this city has suffered for decades of not having enough money to keep up with what the maintenance requirement is. Now, the other thing, too, that we don't want to pass over, general fund is financed by primarily property tax revenue. But in the last two or three years, I think the Finance Division has worked very hard to make sure we had other revenue sources there. So everything in the general fund is not funded by property taxes. I've forgotten now the percentage. It's less than 50%. Now, if I'm not, around 48 or 49%, I've forgotten the math now. Now, if I'm not, around 48 or 49, I said, I've forgotten the math now. But we've done extremely well, I think, in coming up with all the revenue sources to help meet the, the pressure that the general fund has on the services we provide for the city. The other part of this issue is, uh, trying to actually make the salaries for employees, especially in the general fund, more competitive, right along with the multiplying impact of meeting the benefit needs. You know, we've discussed many nights just how providing health care is really a heavy weight, really a heavy weight. And you got to do that right along with just raising the salaries for the employees. You know, we're, we're fighting heavy, still trying to maintain an intelligent level of the appropriate insurance, liability insurance that the city needs to maintain. All we need is one or two wild claims there to shoot the premiums up, but we're kind of holding our own in that area. But back to everything that's being kicked around tonight, it's not like we had a budget last year of $20 and now we've jumped up overnight to $200 million. It's not that much of an increase in one year over the next. Tweaking the budget, making budget amendments, that's the way of life. That's basically how we keep the train on the track. We average anywhere, just about four budget amendments a year. And that's smart budget planning. Because if you know the train is about to get off the track, why wait till it's completely off before you make some adjustments to put it back on place? And that's basically what the budget amendments do. Oh, the other myth too, I want to make sure everybody understands, you know, property taxes are not controlled entirely by the city. The appraisal process, which starts this ban plan, is actually controlled by the county. And if I'm not mistaken, maybe the current appraisal estimates are in the mail. We should be receiving them pretty soon if you haven't gotten them. And that's just appraisal coming from the county that the city is going to have to react to. And we don't just willy-nilly come up with a number that we want to use to, uh, come up with a dollar amount we want to collect from property taxes. Keep in mind, we don't get everything we need to run the general fund from property taxes. Can't do it. Won't have a single home on the left here if the rates will be so high. And while we're doing that too, last word I, I think I want to say on, uh, property taxes, this is city attorney want to correct everything I say in next couple of seconds. And that has to do with the fact that we are doing two things to balance the scale. Making sure we are addressing the need, the educational need for citizens to understand their exemptions. Uh, we made a push especially for the 70-year-old exemption for East Point citizens this year. Quite surprised at the number of folks who actually requested and received that exemption and they've qualified age-wise for maybe five, six years. I think the oldest person that came on board was actually 86 years old. And while we're doing that, that's money that we won't be collecting. We're also realizing we cannot go any longer without doing what we need to do to collect the liquid taxes. What that translates to is basically while other cities close to us having that courthouse sale on the steps, East Point is really looking at how long it's going to be before we're out there. And that's in addition to the properties that we are taking over because of the blighted property process in itself. Uh, city attorney, if I really said anything that was too twisted, feel free to correct me, but I think I'm pretty much on target. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Butler?
Thank you. Um, for my second and last round of speaking, I do have an issue with the amount of money being spent on events. I do also have an, an issue with the, how we're taxing our city employees. When we talk about the importance of our staff, for the last four months, the Public Works Department would not have had a weekend off. When we look at the budget, when we count the $200,000 in addition to the $70,000 to the Main Street, we, we count events totaling $175,000 in a budget amendment, then another $400,000 in the budget, then a $275,000 stage with others, that budget is $1.28 million. So I ask, what can we do with $1.28 million? In Center Park, they've been asking for speed bumps. That's $200,000. When we look at road improvements, yes, we have been blessed with the T-Splats, but we're supposed to have money in the general fund to make road improvements too, so that we can continue to grow and improve this city exponentially. Having said that, I think we should really get a calendar, map out the events, because in some months, we have two to three concerts in one month. And that's not beneficial to the residents. There are some people who complain that they don't get the benefit from tho, that type of entertainment. I would like to say I am not against the entertainment. I am not against the concert. What I would like for us to do is to be physically responsible and actually sit down, map out some of these things and really prioritize how we want to spend this money. And so having said that, I want us to consider, how do we work as a group to, maybe we all don't get what we want, but we can cut back on this budget? What I am concerned about too is, yes, we do have budget amendments, but if we approve this budget, then it's my understanding that we're given an approval to spend the money in that fashion. And I don't think we should vote on spending money thinking we're going to amend the budget later, when we have all of this money for these events. It's, it's too much. I'll close with this. When Fred Gardner was our city manager and we had our retreat, he asked that we reduce the number of events. We have more than doubled the number of events that we have in this city. And it, we, it's just unsustainable. Thank you for the time.
Councilmember Cummings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Councilmember Butler kind of picked, um, talked about some of the things that I wanted to discuss. But, uh, first of all, thank everyone for their, um, their comments, your concerns, and you know, we do hear you, we understand. And I also from echoing on what Councilmember Bailey stated, the residents, they basically want, um, good quality service, uh, fair, um, services, those, those things that'll help to make, move the city forward. So my thing is this, I know that, uh, we've had concerns about the amount of events that we're having. And what I, my ask is for the members of council, if we can, if we could possibly come together and just sort of look at those things that are on there and see if there's some things that we can make some adjustments on. See if we can make some adjustments to create some sort of program for our older, um, teenagers that are here in the city. As, uh, Ms. Pittman did state, we don't have anything in place for those, um, the youth that 12, 18 years of age. So if we could possibly look at, um, creating some sort of program or something for those kids, um, and just to look at the number of events that we do have, because I looked at them as well, and I do see that we do have a, a lot of events. So maybe if we could all just kind of sit together and see if we can't come up with some sort of, uh, some sort of compromise on some of the things, so that we can make sure that we do address the concerns of our residents. Because, um, I too, I've received phone calls as well. Um, I've had emails just about, you know, the amount of things that are going on. And we just want to make sure that, I mean, I know everybody's not going to be able to get everything that they ask for in this budget, but if we can come with some sort of happy medium, that, uh, we can possibly, some, there's some sort of benefit on both sides with regards to this. So my question is, is council open to us having some sort of session before we actually go in and approve this actual budget, so we can make those adjustments? Because one of the things that, um, Councilmember Butler did state, if we go in and we approve it today and we go and we make adjustments, are we going back and we're pulling funds or, or events or whatever from different people? And are they going to be open to doing that when it's already on the, um, books that it, you, you're pretty much approved to do those events now? So my question is, is council open to just sort of us coming together and, um, having a conversation to see if we can, uh, come to some sort of happy resolve when it comes to this?
Councilmember Bailey, Councilmember Cook, I mean, that can be determined by how either a motion goes or doesn't go. So I'll keep going to comments. I have a lot of comments, but I'm waiting patiently for this second round so I can make mine and then you all can make motions. Councilmember?
Bailey.
Councilmember Cook?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question about the budget is related to the permitting process. I know when Director, sorry, I know when Director, um, Smith spoke about what was needed for.
Hold on. Did someone just yell out in, from the? Who was that that yelled out? Was it the former mayor who is aware that we don't yell out in meetings? So please, what, what we will, what we will have in this administration is decency and order. And I think is, so, so you, about one more statement before, um, Chief, you all could possibly get ready. Because what we will have in this administration is decency and order, and you will not yell out while we're speaking. Councilmember Bailey, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is related to the permitting, um, department. I know previously Director Smith spoke about different items that were needed to improve her department. Looking at the notes here, a consultant maybe improving the system that, that the permitting pr, um, department currently had, has. So my question is, does this budget include those items that would improve that department? The improved computer system, a consultant perhaps to help, um, provide more, I guess, strategies to help with that department? And I know that you've been meeting with the focus group as well and hearing those, um, the inputs. So I think we're moving in the right direction with the permitting process, but those are my questions as it pertains to the budget for that department.
Mr. King?
Well, as you all know, we have been meeting with our focus groups, uh, and they've been really much engaged in providing for some ideas. We have a consultant, which you know we brought on board. We are meeting again this Saturday. The data that was extracted from meeting with those focus groups, uh, will be discussed with them on Saturday, uh, at which point in time, we want to give you a holistic response in terms of what business, we got business owners, a couple that you even handed to me, who are going to be a part of that whole process. We have business owners, we have residents, and so in fairness to those people, we want to make sure that they get their opportunity to hear what that is, and then we're going to come with a holistic response in terms of what we provide. So this is going pretty well. And so, uh, you know, this Saturday, we'll have that meeting with the consultant and the business owners and discuss what their ideas were. They had to take their ideas, put it together in a, in a package that we can bring back to them and then discuss with them. So hopefully we'll be able to get you something within the next month or so. But it's moving pretty, pretty robustly. So I thank you all for giving us an opportunity to meet with the residents and business owners and, and, uh, and so we look to have something in the next month or so.
Anything else, Councilmember Bailey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And then my second question pertains to beautification of East Point. Does the current budget, uh, has, uh, considers the, our staff and their ability to pick up the litter? Because we have a, recently a lot of issues with a lot of dumping and, um, and that's been a huge problem. So does this budget consider ways to beautify East Point and be mindful of all the dumping that's going on? Because I know I constantly am, am calling and asking the removal of the dumping and then a few weeks, a few days later, it's back again. So I know that requires cameras. So does this budget consider that, that big issue that we're currently having with beautifying our city?
Well, it's a team effort and it's, and it's including all of us. Uh, and I'm saying that to say that our department head, staff, residents, police, code enforcement, everybody is, is moving into providing some action. Cameras you just mentioned, uh, Chief Buchanan, I got to give him credit, and our IT team with Maurice Price, who have a camera system that we're looking to move across the city is our parks and, you know, that's moving forward. So that's in the budget. Uh, we do have, uh, the plan of where we're looking to maybe expand, we're allowing some, uh, staff to, to work certain key hotspots, particularly during the summer, as we have these summer events. You know, we got the Fourth of July coming up, for example, Juneteenth is coming up. And so, uh, having discussed this with Charles Moore and, and Jeffrey Reeves and those guys, they're going to start pivoting and providing for some additional assistance on those particular hotspot areas that they've looked at. And having that go forward in a regards to having to confront those areas on the weekends. So they'll be doing that probably in the next week or so, if they haven't started that this week. And then also you, you're looking at possibly adding on the code enforcement aspect of it as well, which is where I go back to police, where they're also having to, to crack down on a lot of the offenders. And also looking at the property owners in, in terms of certain parts of their property, they can't go on their property and pick up stuff on their properties. So what they have to do is get to the property owners. And one thing the Chief Buchanan can tell you that they've had a, a robust effort, they're moving towards in providing for the added, added assistance for code enforcement to go to the property owners and discuss, well, these are some areas which you're going to have to, to deal with, or we're going to have to level a heavy hammer on. And so that's been something he's been moving on. So it's concerted effort on all four, for all fronts and having to make sure that we hold people accountable, particular property owners when they have those dumping sites, that we can't go on and access ourselves, but we can make sure we can make the people who are responsible for properties, they're held accountable.
Thank you so much, City Manager.
Councilmember Cook and I think Councilmember Gordon, with your light on? Councilmember Cook?
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I know the mayor is anxious to move ahead with her discussion. Let me just make a couple of comments. Some of them I don't want to make, but they need to be made tonight. Uh, and there's from a practical point of view. First of all, keep in mind fiscal year 24 budget is not a quantum leap in size for what we're already dealing with in 23. Light item changes, yes. Now, let's be realistic too about what we have to do to keep the city moving. We're not going to stop operating as a city because we're still tweaking the budget. Worst come, bad come to worst, we'll do what we did several years ago. We took advantage of what the state would allow us to do, and that is just continue to operate on the existing budget until we get pressure from outer sources, primarily the county, to go ahead and have a new budget on ruckus. There's some other things we need to consider too here while it's almost midnight. And that's basically, we're trying to finish some audits. We're trying to do what we need to do with those audits and the financial reports to maintain our excellent credit rating. Damage than that would do more harm than we can recover from in a year or so. You know, we talk about some of the items we have out there that the council put out there. They're there primarily because the county, the city manager didn't tell you no. Didn't send you back to the rest of the council to say, I'll put it out there. If the whole council agrees to put it out there, you catching some slack, thinking, yes, we're going to have the same revenues, uh, available to us that we had the year before unless we make some decisions to change what we're going to spend our money on. And we still got time to do that. All right now, as long as they've been watching us go through this process, the most intelligent thing I think we should do tonight, keep this train running on schedule. If we want to go back and revisit what we approved tonight, that's a practical thing to do, okay? Because number one, you're not going to give back any money. We know we already have schedule to come to the city. Not going to do that, all right? Because if you do, that's like shooting yourself in the head, not the foot. So if we want to sit down again and say, all right, we're looking at the possibility of being able to raise enough funds to do what we have in this budget, but let's tweak it, twist it around, see how much more we can pull off the table with the idea it would help meet the needs for not tweaking the budget again. That's fine too, but we'll go ahead and approve what we have right now. We're not talking about doubling the budget size. We're talking about out of $188 million, we're adding maybe $2.6 million to it. All right? All right? If everybody's on the same page with that, then we don't need to stop this train. You slow it down a little bit, throw some baggage off if you want to, but we don't need to stop this process, not at this hour, not with the other pressures that the city manager and the finance division have on them right now. Not tomorrow, right now. The very things they've been dealing with now for the last couple of months. You felt this strongly about the items that you have in the budget right now, you objected to, where were you in January? Where were you in December? Where were, where were you last October? Okay? Show that you're really genuine. If you really feel these things, then why is it all popping up here at the last minute? Now, I'm not saying by no means we don't need to tweak the budget. We try to do that at least four times a year as it is. But let's not have a staged drama up here. Let's go ahead and approve what we have out there right now. We know within 30 to 60 days, we're going to change something in there. Something, some outside force is going to force our hands on that. Okay? Let's be realistic about it. We feel like we got egg on our face because we have too many council-generated items? Well, I sure didn't push to tell you to put them out there. Not with the conservative role I tried to play being on the budget committee. All right? But you knew what you were doing when you asked for that project to be put out there. Not a single person says, what does that do with the budget for everything else we already have out there? And keep in mind, since no one has said this, I'm going to say this, then I'm going to sit down. One of the big items out there is actually funded by the hotel motel tax. And it's coming from that percentage of that revenue that allows the city to peel it off from not paying the DMO, not paying anything else that's strictly related to hotel motel tax revenue activity and take that same amount of money and put it in the general fund. And when you look at that percentage and when you look at what we're forecasting for hotel motel revenue in 2024, we're talking something like about $1.2 million. That the law says we can do anything with it that we want to. Okay? Now, we know we're not spending that much money on one topic out there that the council is pushing, let's do. These projects that raise that total sum up to $1.2 million. We know that. That money's got to come from somewhere else that's important. So if you think that's too much, we only have ourselves to blame for that, for waiting up to the last minute to police this whole process. Let's approve this budget tonight. Want to have additional conversations? Let's have that. You want to take a second, look at something, take it off the budget? Let's do that. But let's not hold up the train tonight. We got too many other issues depending on this budget being passed to keep the city in the strong financial position it is in right now, this very minute. By no means am I advocating anything standing there that we think we need to get rid of. But let's not grandstand tonight on that topic. Madam Mayor, I'm done. Madam Mayor, I'm done.
So, um, let me start by saying, just because somebody makes a statement, it doesn't mean it's true. So when somebody comes in here, and not even just in here, repeatedly puts out disinformation and misinformation, making accusations of criminal wrongdoing by this council and our city staff, there's absolutely no way I'm gonna suggest any level of credence to that. To talk about state law, this, state law, that. When people just make statements, do you have the law in front of you? You have to read for yourself so that people can't try to persuade you because of the tone, the tenor, or the volume of their voice. So our charter, which is, was in effect, has been in effect for quite some time, and definitely during previous administrations. Section 5-102 Budget Action, Section C. "The City Council shall adopt the budget on or before the first meeting of June." In 2013, so the only person who was on council at that time was Councilmember Cook. In 2013, the budget that was supposed to be adopted by charter shall be adopted, that's like mandatory, required, on the first Monday in June, was not adopted until December of 2013, halfway through a fiscal year. During the administration of the person who came and spoke before us tonight. So I'm not gonna in any way suggest any level of credence, of support, or trying to ask our city attorney to look into allegations of criminal wrongdoing by this council because a person who continues to spread misinformation, disinformation, and mislead this community, and just share what is known to be untruths, to suggest that we should be doing that tonight. As it relates to the events at our May work session, when the city manager and staff first presented this budget to us, I said that night that the total of events in this budget is $1,241,000. And of that, $400,000 is the Wednesday wind down. Everybody wants to talk about the Wednesday night. $400,000 is Wednesday wind down. That means $841,000 is for other events. Some of these events that are included in this budget have been previously approved and voted on by council as events within the city. There are a number that have not been, which is why we're up to $841,000 of additional events outside of the one that everyone likes to talk about. As Councilmember Cook stated, these items are in here because council put them forward, and the city manager reports to all nine of us. So he's not gonna push back. It's for us to make that decision, but no one wanted to make that decision before tonight. When I brought it up at the May work session, nobody said, well, yeah, let's pause, let's go through it tonight. And no one has talked about the other items in it. So I could take time and go through each item and the amount that's listed in this budget that totals $1,241,000 for events. But I will direct you to pages one through five of 235 in the expense section of the budget that's online. When we talk about, and I think, um, I wanted to take, take some time to talk about the millage rate and our millage rate over the past 10 years. This, the millage rate has gone down, so the number, right? Whether it's 13, I think now, what's the millage rate for this year is 13? So that has been a steady decrease from previous years. But the rollback rate, yes, is less, less than that. And I think that was what the speaker was trying to convey, is that the rollback rate basically is the rate that if we roll it back, we get the same amount of revenue that we had received in the previous fiscal year at that millage rate. And so when that doesn't happen, while it's not an increase of numbers, because we've steadily decreased the numbers, by law, it's determined to deem to be an increase because it's not the rollback millage rate. I will say that when we talk about, and salary increases and valuing our staff, there's a misnomer that staff is still at $15 an hour. That was actually approved in fiscal year 2019. July 1st of 2019 is when it started. And there have been COLA since then. So the number is probably a little bit higher than that. And I'm not suggesting that it is where it should be. But that's why we're doing the compression study, to be able to determine how we address the compression in everyone's salary in this city. Because in order to, the way that we show we value our employees is how we compensate them and the benefits that we provide. But we also expect excellent service in return. And so, the compression study is going on and soon should be completed. And as indicated, and as we have done consistently, prioritize our people. Whatever recommendation comes to us from staff, we will definitely strongly consider that. As it relates to safety, safety will and always be our top priority. In fact, we allocated almost $5 million of American Rescue Plan Act funding to fire and police. We've increased salaries substantially. The starting salaries created merit increases, relocation increases. So everything that has been asked for from our police department, from equipment to technology, all of that, this council has unanimously adopted. And needs change, right? We expect our department heads and our leaders through our city manager to let us know what those needs are so that we can do our role as it relates to allocating the appropriate funding to continue to do that. And I know that there's a continued commitment to continue to prioritize safety and make sure that we are providing whatever resources and supports are needed as we have done consistently previously and over time. As it relates to the programming for youth. So, facts. Our police department has a summer program going on now for youth ages 10 to 15 years old. Facts. Our Parks and Recreation Department has a summer program that includes STEM programming, as well as a number of recreational sports programs for youth that range from 3 to 14. And we all have, were, are aware that COVID impacted programming. And so as we're coming through that and continuing to bring back a lot of our programming, our Parks and Recreation staff is also applying for grants for, to be able to help serve youth that are older, as well as providing job readiness programs, mentorship, and various programs for jobs related to Parks and Recreation programming. At the recent Stop the Violence event that Councilmember Renee had, we had Amazon there to share information for summer jobs, or just employment, not just summer jobs. There, there are jobs that they're having. As a city, the city manager is working with, has worked with department heads, and they're looking at what positions we have available in our city for our older youth. As well as there are a number of other businesses within the city that we're talking to as it relates to employment. And then also, employment at good wages, right? Even for our youth. And so, to suggest that there's absolute lack of concern for our youth is, I won't even call it an understatement, is totally untrue. And consistently over time, you will see the demonstrated action of this council by what we have adopted and approved that actually show where our priorities are and that we do value our residents, all of our residents, every age, based upon the variety of programming that we offer. As it relates to planning and zoning, the city manager has indicated that he already previously provided additional staff for that department. So it's already in the budget. It relates to increasing the salaries of our employees. Compression study is nearing end, and we'll be making that decision at that time. But I encourage each and every one of you that before you believe anything someone says, just because they said it by the tone, the tenor, the volume of their voice, that you do your own homework. We're not hiding anything. The budget is online. The budget is available in the clerk's office. These meetings are held in public. As it relates to the millage rate and rolling back, I hear you. But there's also a level of service that our community wants. And wants us to continue to enhance those services for our residents. And so while we're not going, haven't gone back to the rollback rate, the number that actually is the millage rate has gone down over time. And so I understand what you're saying. And, and we are cognizant of that. The Office of Equity and Inclusion and Empowerment was adopted by this council on February 20th of this year. There are minutes from that meeting. There's a budget amendment that reflects the creation of the department. So I'm not sure how in any other organization departments are created, but I know they need funding. And I know that this council's role is to approve a budget. And there are certain things that the city manager can do without council approval. And there are things that require council approval. So on February 20th, you go back and look at the minutes from that meeting. There was a decision, it was a budget amendment that was a request from our city manager to create the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Empowerment at $1 million using our American Rescue Plan Act funds. So there was a action by this council. There's also an overview of that department provided by the city manager. That department reports to the city manager, does not report to the mayor, despite the misinformation and disinformation out there. And that the city manager is staffing that department and will continue to come back to this council as it relates to recommendations from that department. So when we talk about caring about all people, what COVID has shown us is that it impacted everyone, regardless of race, color, creed, socioeconomic status. Everyone was impacted by COVID. And it also showed us the need to intentionally make sure that we have an infrastructure in place that supports everyone. Not just people who come to meetings, not just people who work, not just people who are able to transport themselves from here to, everyone. And so through that, we were able to get grants. And we're the only city in Fulton County, Atlanta received their money directly from the, the feds and from the county, or from the federal government. But we were the only city that applied for grants to provide utility assistance to our residents from CARES Act funding. We applied for emergency solutions grants to be able to provide utility and rental assistance to residents. And we applied for CDBG grant funds to be able to provide mortgage assistance to our residents. That totaled over a million dollars, right? What we know is that just because that happened then, and we were able, when we asked the county for $500,000, they gave us $550,000 so that, for administration. And we were able to bring in an employee who's actually been working with and has helped over 560 people get connected to the resources that they need, from housing to employment, to whatever the services that they need to be able to help bridge those gaps and connect them and help them take care of their families. She's helped over 60 families who were unhoused become housed. In fact, when we were at the Stop the Violence event just last week, she said she had to leave early because she had two families moving in and she was going to assist them. That need doesn't stop. Given the demographics and the opportunities within our community, that need continues to exist. And the Office of Equity and Inclusion and Empowerment will be able to help ensure that we as a government are doing what we can to leverage our network relationships, resources, and influence to make that happen. And so during the discussion tonight, there have been a number of questions, I think, staff has asked them along the way. The city manager responded, what I will ask right now. I tried to take notes about everyone's concerns to see if there are any questions that council members have tonight that they asked that they don't feel were addressed, although we've been through two rounds. I want to make sure that that happens. There was also a question by Councilmember Cummings to, if council will be willing to have further discussion. And again, I, I want, I invite you all to look at pages one through five out of 235 and see the events and the amounts that make up that $841,000 that I talked about at our May work session. And we haven't received any comments or anything until now. We had the May work session meeting, we had the third meeting in May of council. And then at the May work session, I indicated the timeline for approval of this budget by our charter. And so here we are tonight. So their question is whether or not staff wants to have a conversation. I mean, it's not staff, council wants to have a conversation about events tonight, or if there's gonna be a motion as it relates to the budget tonight. For Renee.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the FY24 proposed budget.
And properly seconded. I just have one question, and I think, I'm not sure. Is my computer connected? Because I could pull it up from here. If not, Madam City Clerk, I'll need to have you, because we'll need to have the second reading. But generally, that is the adoption of the agenda by reading the title within that motion to adopt. Thank you so much. To adopt the budget. And so, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm city attorney.
You're correct, Madam Mayor. This is my city amendment, and I would just discuss it.
So Councilmember Renee, if you could withdraw your motion and then, or amend the motion by making the motion based upon the ordinance, and then that will be our second reading.
Thank you, I apologize. I'd like to amend the motion to read the motion into the ordinance. An ordinance by the City Council of the City of East Point, Georgia to adopt a budget for the fiscal year ending in June 30th, 2024, to provide for an effective date and for other purposes, be it ordained by the mayor and council of the City of East Point, and it is hereby ordained by the authority of said that amount in the amount of $191,396,602.
There's second, Councilmember Cook. It's been moved and properly seconded that we adopt the ordinance. Any questions on that motion? Remember, Cook, is your light on from seconding? Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Shawshire, Councilmember Robertson, Councilmember Renee.
Aye.
Councilmember Bailey, Councilmember Cummings, Councilmember Cook, Councilmember Butler, Councilmember Gordon. The motion passed.
Thank you. Next up, we have public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, ma'am, we have six public comments this evening.
Okay. Chapter 2, Section 2-2002 BB Rule 28. "The public may speak during the public speaking, public comment section of the agenda. Speakers must complete a comment form prior to the start of the meeting. Subject may include any subject of choice. There will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Speakers that have signed up to speak may give all or a part of their time, up to three minutes, to another speaker for a total of six minutes of speaking time. Speakers may address the council only once during this time of the agenda. Speakers must identify themselves and their address prior to speaking. Questions from the speakers may not be addressed during the public speaking section of the agenda. East Point residents will have priority over other speakers. There will be a total of not more than 60 minutes for the public speaking section of the agenda. Speakers may only address the presiding officer. Speakers shall observe all rules of the quorum." Speakers shall observe all rules of the quorum. No debate, disrespect, or obscenity shall be tolerated. The presiding officer shall rule any such individual out of order that fails to comply with the foregoing. Madam City Clerk, you can call the first speaker.
Up first, we have Mr. Keith Thiem, and my apologies if I mispronounce your last name. Keith, the, oh, okay, alright. Ms. Anitra Favors.
Good evening, council. I'm coming here on happy news tonight. I know that budget was kind of heavy.
Could you, real quick, could you state your name and your address for me, please?
Thank you, ma'am. My name is Anitra Favors. I have been a resident of East Point residing at 1856 Broad Avenue for the past 12 years, and I am coming to thank the council for the East Point Healthy Point Initiative. I have enjoyed it thoroughly. I didn't find out about it till midway through it because I, um, apart, I have paperless. Um, I don't get the paper mailing, but a non-resident told me about it. And so the fact that it's reaching out past, um, the residents into other communities and it's bringing other people to our community. I'm here on behalf of the 119 people that have participated in the, in the four classes I have participated in in the past week. We would like to see this program expanded beyond the three months that it has currently been running to be something that is extended to the community. I think, I can't think of a better way or resources to get in the community healthy. It ranges from all ages. I've seen all ages in the classes in which I've participated in. And I just want to give thanks for this, and I hope that you guys would seriously consider expanding this program. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Up next, we have Ms. Jaclyn George.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor Ingram and the council. I just wanted to come and say thank you for, um, all the negativity, but I'm, want to say thank you for Wind Down Wednesday. I enjoyed myself. I appreciate it. And all the negative things that I'm hearing, I'm kind of well of hearing so much negativity by East Point. I've been in East Point for 40 something years. I moved here in 1983. And, uh, East Point has grown, and I think you have the opportunity to do even more for East Point. Um, and one other thing, a couple of points I wanted to make, when it came to the taxes with Fulton County, I did apply for the exemption and I did receive it for the school, and I spread that information to as many people as I could. When you want, you say you want to make sure people are aware of these exemptions, please consider the elderly community. They do not have computer savvy. They are not technology. I went to a meeting with Fulton County and they kept talking about it. And one elderly person said, well, would you please use your mail? Put it in writing for us so we can understand it. I'm 68, so I feel left out. I'm not computer savvy. I have to ask people. So all I'm saying is please consider that. The other thing when it comes to taxes, I've asked some state legislators. What I think, this is my personal opinion, that needs to be done is that a home should be based on their property. None of the property down the street that they paid 30, $40,000 for, then they come in and make it a $600,000 home, and my taxes are based on that home. I brought that up in a Fulton County, uh, uh, they were talking about taxes and things. Nobody answered my question. So, and I don't want to put negative information out there, but I think if I'm not mistaken, that the person that deals with the taxes with, uh, Fulton County, I think they may get a little something on the side based on the amount of taxes that they collect. So now please check me on that, but I think that's true too. So it's a whole lot of things that needs to be considered. And for some reason, nobody ever runs against this person either. So, I mean, it's just a lot of things that need to be considered. But again, I thank East Point for Wind Down Wednesday. I think it can grow. Uh, when I saw it, the first thing I thought about was Piedmont Park, but Pal's at B took that away too. It was so much complaining that eventually it left Piedmont Park. So all, and now this weekend, coming up, I'm looking at my seconds, this coming up, uh, with, uh, and, um, the, the, for Juneteenth, they're having a big event in Centennial Park, but you don't hear anybody complaining. Everybody's looking forward to it. And a lot of these events that we have, it takes away stress, mental health. We need to look at a lot of things. I understand with the parks and ricks and all, but we need to have balance. So again, thank you, East Point. I'm not moving out of East Point. I wish I would stop these people from calling me to sell my house because I'm not selling it. So, thank you so much. You all be blessed and be safe.
Thank you for your comment. Up next, we have Dr. Martin Rogers.
Dr. Martin Rogers, Parkway Circle in the Heritage Park Community Subdivision. Good evening, mayor and council. The biggest investment that many hardworking people have is their home. With that being said, I have come before this council for the last few months in an effort to not only advocate for my community, but the entire city. Residents in my community join hands to remain diligent in watching vacated homes, contacted property managers, the police, thank you, East Point Police Department, drafted countless emails and maintained video surveillance. Last month, this issue was placed on the agenda and council members Shortshire and Renee openly discussed and addressed the issue of squatters. And the city attorney advised both members there was nothing else that could be done. Can more be done or not? This is a prime example of putting politics and profit over people. I personally think that getting a handle on this issue is going to take a multi-jurisdictional approach with a dedicated task force from each municipality tackling these individuals, which include property management companies and individuals who knowingly conspire to obtain property illegally. They aren't just mothers with children. Piecemealing something of this magnitude simply will not work. Secondly, the council is a self-policing body. Some council members have purposely placed items on the presentation section of the agenda to avoid taking it to the work session where it belongs. This tactic has not only prolonged meetings, public comments, and most importantly, the employees of this city work all day and must attend these meetings well after 10 o'clock PM and are expected to return to work the next day. As a professional courtesy, presentations should not include a debate and should not last more than 15 or 20 minutes. Lastly, what is the projected timeline of trailers and an engine in Ward D? There is a trailer on site, so there is some progress, but what is the timeline? Thank you to council members that put people over politics and profit. And I also look forward to meeting the needs of our youth by hosting the Stop, continuing to host the Stop the Violence rallies in the City of East Point. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Lastly, we have Ms. Ernestine Pittman, and she had time given to her by Napoleon Black.
Thank you, Ernestine Pittman, Arrowhead Drive, City of East Point. Uh, Madam Mayor, you should have read the full statement about the adoption of a budget. It can be on or before June 1st or go month to month until it is adopted. There is no time limit. Next, let's talk about departments. And let's talk about the charter. The charter says any appropriation made in the budget comes under the direct supervision of the city manager, who does not have to come back to council except for those items that have previously been voted on, like tri-year agreements, multi-year contracts, they have already been voted on. If the city manager wants to spend any other money that has been appropriated, it has to come back before the council and be encumbered in a legis- by the legislative body. You have to vote on it. Please don't ever, uh, refer to me as that someone who's this and who's that. As far as the money in this city, we have finished hopefully with the concrete tad. The city now has access to more money than it has had in all the 47, 49 years I have lived here from any area. Also, this year should mark the 10th year for the $59 million unfunded pension that hung over us until after 12 years, I finally got it voted on to spend the money to do that. That money is now, $6 million a year should go back into the treasury for the FY budget. This year, the lost that the City of East Point received an 11 extra million dollars because of negotiation by this former mayor. Now that mayor up there has a jar, has her hands full because the City of South Fulton is now taken over and no longer under the district tax of Fulton County. And when we talk about CDBG money and the only city that asks, if you have a population of 50 million, you get your CDBG money directly. That just leave Pal Mera out of St. Pine Mountain, um, Chattahoochee, Farburn, Union City in South Fulton County. The rest of them meet their population requirement. Now let's talk about parks. Parks program over there according to parks and rate and open order and what they have. They have a program for 60 children rotating in and out to come to a total of 120. We talk about, you talk about STEM. STEM is a paid for tutorial program from an outs- outside person who's come here year round. That is not a park and recreation program by the City of East Point. And all that would be on the cover, 120 children. Now let's talk about parks. You haven't done anything to Brookview since we brought it back and renovated it. You're going to put some, uh, pickle, whatever it is, um, uh, pickle, uh, slabs over there on the tennis court. We are the one that fixed up Sykes Park. That people, even a police, woman police officer today was afraid to go in there in a SUV because of the men and all that hang out in there. Now how do you expect us, families, children and all to go over there in it? You need security over there. You need to have retired police officers to come in and patrol that park. That's where the money needs to go. It does not need to go to Wind Down Wednesday. When I want entertainment, I can go to Chastain Park. I can go to Wolf Creek. I, I mainly, I go to Beauregard and, uh, Gulfport. But that's what I want to do. I don't take taxpayers' money and set up and talk about, uh, we're bringing this. I don't, that's not class. That class left only 120 children. 100 and they're in three weeks, three weeks. The money that's coming from the police department for that boot camp, it's a grant. And while we're talking about money, let's get this straight. In the 1990s, we screwed up with that unfunded pension, fooling around with the police and fire department because of federal regulations on when they can retire. I asked for all positions in the City of East Point by sal- salaries by all positions. You need to look at that. Our staff is not underpaid. You hit the ones that's out there on the street every day, public works, sanitation. Those are the ones that's not making anything. But the others, they are, and they're going to have us in the same position with our pension that is finally funded in the 95, in, in 90% percent time. That has not happened since the city went into a pension plan. And would not have happened if we had not adopted that constant method in order to get rid of that $59 million unfunded pension that had 203 beneficiaries and not a single employee. So don't tell me about the money in East Point.
That concludes our public comments this evening. Thank you to everyone who spoke. We will now move to our agenda items. Agenda item four is update on short-term rentals. Councilmember Renee, if you do a motion to open the floor for discussion of possible action.
Good afternoon, um, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for, um, an update on short-term rentals. It'll be very short. For a motion to open the floor.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. King, I see Ms. Smith at the podium. Would you like her to give us an update?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'll pivot over to our director for planning committee, Kimberly Smith. Kimberly?
Thank you, uh, city manager King. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council, fellow council. Um, just quickly wanted to state that we were able to get in contact with our Granicus um, representative, and they have confirmed that they'll be able to come in and give us a short-term rental update status on the third meeting of this month, which will be our June 20th meeting.
Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question. I got a call from a resident that apparently is in the short-term rental. And apparently there's somewhere in the software where we're taxing them and the short-term rental system is taxing them. Seems like it's a double tax. Can you share with us if that's true and what's the update on solving that solution?
Um, yes, staff is aware and, um, we're working between the departments to get that rectified.
Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a, um, I have a resident on Duke who applied for short-term rental status and didn't get their permit until December, and then now they've been asked to reapply. How, what is the timeline for the, uh, so when you apply for a license, how long does it last and what happens? And I think that person was, uh, it took us a while to get them their license. So are there any provisions that we can make because part of what we did with Granicus didn't do was not get them their permitting time?
Um, the permitting time is just a standard review time. Um, since Granicus came on board, our permitting process has been transferred to their module. There have been some overlaps and some glitches in their module and using their module. And so we're in discussions with Granicus, and I think that's one of the issues that will be talked about over the next couple of weeks and how we should move forward with the actual permit issuance logistics. Cause there's some overlap in our system versus their system.
Councilmember Cook.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, quick question. In YRC, you know, we don't really have that much real estate that's going to qualify for ARB. We got a few homes, I've had to enter the city from Atlanta. And then the apartment complex is off of Washington Road. So in terms of ARB's been a major issue in YRC, zone won't allow it. But now that the topic has come up tonight, I'm, I don't believe we all have a feel for just how well it's doing citywide in terms of bringing on the Mavericks onboard. And then those who come onboard, are they having any difficulty staying onboard, meeting the necessary requirements? Is it possible just to get a overlook of how that process is going? Not tonight, but sometime before the summer's over with.
Yes.
Okay. To include how many folks that we think are still out there who have not been made bona fide yet or legal. They're still bootlegging the process, but we know they're out there. We just have to bring them onboard.
Yes, sir.
And one last thing. To the extent those legitimate homes impact hotel motel tax revenue collections. And it may be it's going to take a year or two before we even see that activity. I don't really know, but I just didn't think of that. Thank you.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of quick questions. One, um, in Ward D, we had, um, a short-term rental just a couple of weeks ago that resulted in some, some gunfire. So my question is, while that's of course criminal, would Granicus in instances like that or any other nuisances be involved in terms of notifying the property owner with any level of, well, if they're cited by the city, I know that that's one thing, but is there any connectivity with Granicus in that regard? Because I would think that if we're keeping a database or registry of those homes, that that would go against them in some level of way in terms of a strike against them. I don't know if they have, I mean, I know we don't have like a demerit system or anything, but some level of system that if you've had so many nuisance incidents or criminal incidents at this resident that you can no longer be a host. Are they connected in any way to our city in that regard?
I could definitely look into getting a response to that.
And my other question is this. In the corridor where I live in Ward D, there are a few HOA, literal HOA associations. And the issue that is occurring there is while yet is noted that if covenants change, that covenant would supersede city ordinance. But the problem that we're having is these HOAs cannot meet quorum when it's time for those annual meetings. So no business can be conducted, so the covenants cannot be changed. One thought is this, and I don't know the application process in detail regarding a host or a property owner registering their property for, I'm calling it a license, I guess. Be it in the application process for communities or homes that reside within HOA communities that there must be some level of sign-off from that HOA board which would allow the board in the neighborhood to be aware that there's a short-term rental in the community. Not that anyone's bashing them. The issue that we've had on that side of the city or our side of the city is the fact that there's been a lot of nuisance associated with the short-term rentals because oftentimes the property owner is not there, which is why the ordinance for our side of the city requires a home stay, which oftentimes is not happening. The home a couple of weeks ago, the owner was not there. It was not a home stay, it was actually a whole house rental. So just trying to find ways to make sure that if this house is being rented out for short-term rental, that one is coinciding with what the ordinance says. And if it is not, that there is some sort of action definitely being taken against the property owner.
In reference to covenances, that is a question on the application, whether or not that the applicant has permission from the homeowner association. And if through their covenants, if it's allowed. Covenances are governed strictly by the homeowner association and it's completely outside of the city's purview. So we don't get involved in that part of it. And we could always look into maybe amending our ordinance to see how we can close any gaps. But at the present time, we don't really deal with the covenances in that aspect. But it is a question asked on the actual application.
So I have to follow up to what she just said. It's a question, of course, if I'm a property owner and I don't know, I could just lie and say yes. You know.
We require a copy of it.
You require a copy of the covenant?
Of the covenants, yes.
Okay. But no contact is made to the actual HOA at all from the city staff? Is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Renee.
Thank you so much, Ms. Smith, and I appreciate it. And I'm glad that my colleagues are asking questions because these same questions probably should be asked when the Airbnb contractor comes. Some of the things I really want, some of the residents that's been calling for complaints. We've having some major problems in East Washington where it's becoming a party house. They are partying from Thursday all the way up until Sunday. And they're blocking mailboxes, narrow streets, cars are everywhere, loud noises. They're just having a good old grand of a time and a lot of their residents are complaining. So they have went to the site where we say that they can make a complaint and our team has not been very responsive, especially on that particular house. And I tell them to continue to make the complaints because what happened was, I think, at one time the police did a raid on that particular house and the owner put the windows back in like the very next day or whatever and it was open for business. And so we know that they're doing a lot of weed smoking and all of those kind of things. But it's taxing the policing department. And when we got houses in our community that's overtaxing the police, we probably need to do a lot of things, especially with the trash overgrown, like they got trash cans that are on the side of the house. They got trash overflowing, grass is growing up. So we do have some problems with Airbnb and the residents don't feel like our contractors are meeting the needs. And so and the other parties, my colleagues, I think they made very good points. So when they come, let us all have a robust conversation with them and to see how we can make this process a lot better. And we want to know how many Airbnbs are in each district or each ward. I think that's relevant. And then we also want to know how many live in the city of East Point, live in the house in East Point, or corporate owners. I think that's kind of fair. And then we also want to know how many complaints have been filed in the city in reference to that. Is there anything else? Because this is going, the contractors are going to make a presentation. And these are some of the questions I think that they should have when they get here. And it'll be, they'll be here June 20th, I think, to June 20th, I think.
Yes, that's correct.
I yield, Madam Mayor. I just, and thank you so much for keeping this on. And I know they couldn't be tonight, but I thought that was pretty good. And so now that you could go back and you can have these questions ready for us to go. Thank you, I appreciate it.
I just have one question or comment around the HOAs that aren't able to amend their covenants. Interim city attorney, I can't remember the language that's actually in our ordinance. I remember what we put on the flyer and said that the HOA's covenants would govern in those neighborhoods, in my neighborhood where that situation happens. If there's not a covenant that specifically speaks to it, does the ordinance then kick in because it's prohibited in residential limited zoning districts, which is?
That's correct.
Right. So if it's not, they're not able to meet quorum, then our local ordinance kicks in and they're under those same requirements?
That's correct.
And then you said that they're required to provide the covenants?
A copy of their covenants. The question is asked in the application, do you have permission or is your homeowner association, does it allow short-term rentals? There's a question. So they have to answer it and provide backup proof through our covenants.
And so in a situation where, I'll talk to you offline. It's fine. Any other comment? Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. The mayor just brought up a point, so I wanted to ask for a point of clarity. So is it that in most of Ward D, which is residential limited, is it that we allow home stay or that we don't allow any short-term rentals?
Residential limited, we allow home stay. Whole house is not permitted.
Okay. So again, the issue that was, that they're having is that even with the home stay, you know, they're still leasing them out without any knowledge. And I think that in some communities, they don't want them at all. I think, Mayor, you're saying that Lake Cypress, their covenant says that there's no short-term rental at all?
So what I'm saying is, as it relates to the question that was brought up about communities not being able to get quorum, to have a meeting to change their covenants, would our ordinances kick in? And they do. And then as it relates to home stay, when we went through this, these meetings, multiple meetings and community meetings, what we decided as a council is that throughout the city, so it's not just in communities with HOAs, throughout the city, home stay is allowed anywhere in the city. Because I don't know if it's your neighbor, your relative, whomever you've allowed to stay in your home. And when we think about the resources of our city, that would, I mean, there's no way to really police that. So I think the home stay issue is not what I'm talking about, it's the whole house. Because home stay is allowed throughout the city. Anybody who's living in their home and wants to allow someone to stay in their home, that's what home stay covers. And that's every neighborhood in the city.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So is this on our June 20th council meeting? So not the work session, it'll be on June 20th? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much. Next, we are at comments from council. Do we have any comments?
Yes.
Councilmember Renee.
I'd like to, I'd like to make an appointment, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make an appointment to the building authority board, Mr. Steve James.
Is that, that's?
I'm sorry, yeah, that's the motion, Madam Mayor.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Moved and properly seconded that we appoint Steve James to the building authority. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And Mr. James is actually here tonight. He's probably one of very few people who are actually here on the night that you're appointed. So congratulations.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for your service.
And Madam Mayor, thank you for that. I also like to congratulate our staff. We had, well, not us, but the city, South Fulton did a city taste-off that was hosted by Michelle Taylor-Williams. And guess what? One of our greatest residents, one of our employees, Cece, won the taste-off. I recommended, I heard that she had good cooking skills, well, at least better than mine. And so, and she went down to South Fulton last Friday and won the whole thing and got a big, big, big trophy. And so we want to say congratulations to us. And they did a really big, they made it a really big deal and I'm very, very proud of Ms. Cece. And so I think that was really good. This weekend, we also met, I thought it was one of our most productive meetings, with city council, building authority, DDA, and BIDA board, the BIDA board. And so I was hoping that we could meet again very soon so that we could push it forward. Is it okay if I make a motion for our next meeting or should I wait till the next meeting? Or just put it on the council?
I mean, I think you can make a motion, but maybe let staff work out the date.
Okay. Okay. All right. So you want me to just leave it until next Monday? On the city council, I mean, on the work session?
So you have one or two options. You can make a motion tonight to have another meeting and then let staff select the dates or work on a date and then come back with a date certain. But you can do it either way.
I thought it was a really good meeting. I'd like to make another motion that we together meet with the DDA board, BIDA board, and the building authority along with city council and the city manager, deputy city manager, or staff, staff who, city manager deemed proper to be there. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? So the motion is that we have another meeting with the downtown development authority, building authority, and BIDA, and council, and city staff to continue the conversations started last weekend. So there are a lot of people who are in for council comments that I ask for discussion. So if you have a discussion, you want to go in on discussion, then just raise your hand and then I'll call you. So people won't have to turn their light out.
So we're voting for it.
Councilmember Shropshire.
I just have a question. Can you include in the motion to have staff work out the dates?
Oh, yes. And have staff, to include, to have staff in the date? To coordinate the dates.
Thank you.
Does the second still stand?
Yes.
I see councilmember Butler, Robertson for discussion on that motion or? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Then goes councilmember Renee. Member Bailey was next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of comments about the retreat. It actually was a great experience, learned a lot. Kudos to the staff that put it on, economic development department, mayor was involved, and also was it one other department, whomever put it together. It was well done, we learned a lot and I'm so excited to, the next one that's coming. Thank you for that motion. And then secondly, presidents of different organizations in, or different neighborhoods in East Point have asked for a conference. They've come to me and asked, could they have a conference? And they are recommending July 15th to be the date. Crush Restaurant, which is located in Ward B, is a sponsor and they want to provide the food. So we just need to find a location, which would likely be in a city, in a city location so that it won't cost anything, I'm thinking, to have this event. So just want to make that comment, that's what they're asking, to have a conference and have information shared with them about how to make their areas better. So I wanted to just mention that to council.
Is that a conference or are they asking for a town hall? Like what type of event?
Like a two-hour meeting to talk to, for information about perhaps how to get a speed bump, just information sharing.
The town hall meeting?
I guess that's what it would be called, yes.
I mean, when I think conference, I'm thinking like, do they want to have speakers come in?
Speakers. They would like speakers.
Right, not from city staff, like outside of?
Well, I'm thinking that it would definitely be from city staff because a lot of their questions will be from city staff. We might have someone there just different to just talk to them perhaps. But we're still organizing them, we're organizing with the couple presidents.
So if you want to use the city building, make a motion either tonight or later after you finalize? I mean, I think it's a community event, whether you call it a town hall or a conference. I think that's, I think your ask is to use the city building to have it. Hold on a minute. So councilmember Bailey, are you attempting to make a motion to use the city building?
I think if that's appropriate, I would like to do that.
I think she said she wanted to have an event on July 15th and she wants to use a city location. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to help her with her item. What, did you say point of order, councilmember Butler? Point of what?
Clarity.
Okay. So councilmember Bailey, do you want to make a motion or not?
I would like to make a motion, but I would like to clarify Crush Restaurant, they're providing the food, not the location. So I wanted to clarify that. And I was in search of a location, preferably here in our city, so that it's free.
Right. So a city building?
City building, yes.
There's a motion to use the city building for a community conference or a community event, July 15th?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Butler, let me get a second, I'll come to you on discussion.
Well, she doesn't need a motion for a town hall meeting. We've already established that if she has a town hall meeting, she can use the facilities without a vote of council. That's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, and you are correct on that. And so I'm asking whether it's a town hall or a conference, but given our ability to, because I'm not sure. So either she, councilmember Bailey can wait until she has further information to determine whether or not it's just a town hall or if it's another type of event. I was just giving her the opportunity to go ahead and get what she needs from council tonight. Either way, whether it's a town hall, a non-town hall, community event?
I would like a town hall if I'm allowed to also have staff participation at the town hall meeting.
So staff is allowed at town halls and that doesn't require additional vote from council. You mentioned a conference. And so I'll stop trying to help facilitate people making sure they can go ahead and plan their events. And if it's just, if it's just the town hall that you want to have, move forward with that. There's a motion on the floor though and it's been seconded. So it's up to you to either withdraw your motion, move forward with just the town hall, move forward and have a vote on you being able to use the city buildings for an event, whether it's different than the town hall. And then I think there's question on discussion. So we're in discussion on it and council for comments. So just raise your hand if you want to go in for discussion. Councilmember comments, I think. Councilmember Shropshire, did you have something?
No.
Okay.
I'm just trying to see.
Hold on, hold on a minute. Let me go to councilmember comments and I'll come back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one question. And it's going to be open for all wards with the major presidents?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Shropshire?
Can we get an understanding as to where Crush is? I thought Crush is here in Ward D.
No, so. The event won't, I don't know, did you say Crush is another, I think you said Quest?
It is Crush.
Okay, so you said Crush is going to provide the food? But not the location? Oh, I'm, I'm not sure with the redistricting, I mean. But the event is not going to be at, at Crush?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Trying to figure it out, because I know it will be district, but I know it wasn't that hard. One, that is, but not that. But it's, it's with all neighborhood presidents?
Yes, that's what they're requesting.
So if it's, so is, anybody else have any discussion on this? So, Councilwoman Bailey, um, you mentioned conference, which is why I suggested a motion. It's up to you whether you withdraw it or get a vote on it, because it's something different.
I think I would like, based on what I'm hearing, what they're wanting, it sounds more like a conference. Or, that's what it sounds like to me.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second? It was seconded by Councilmember Renee, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Anything else, Councilmember Bailey?
No, thank you so much. I'll be asking for input other, since it's going to include all of East Point, all wards, I'll be asking for other council members' input to help with it. Just your input, I'll do, do the work. But as far as topics you want to see in the conference, I'll be asking your input.
All right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Butler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and then thank you, Councilwoman Renee. You reminded, um, the Ward D representatives that we need to make two appointments. The first is to appoint Sonya Booker to DDA. I would like to make a motion that we appoint Sonya Booker to DDA.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
The second appointment is to.
And, hold on just a moment. Councilmember Gordon, you made a second, because that's a joint appointment, right?
Correct.
So, make sure the record has a second from Councilmember Gordon. Go ahead, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you very much. The second appointment is Nate Smith to Eritropolis CID.
Second.
Yeah, it's been moved and properly seconded that we appoint Nate Smith to the Eritropolis CID's and the. So I'll go, is there anybody for discussion, because I have some coming?
Yes, I have a question.
Councilmember Cook?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wasn't aware that we could actually nominate anyone to the CID.
So, so we can make an appointment. The last one was Natalie Martin, who was with Duke. She's no longer with Duke, and so there creates a vacancy. And the last time that this was brought before council and discussed, um, there was a desire from council to have more discussion around that appointment, because it's a citywide, it's an appointment for the city, not just the ward. Um, and I don't know that we've had any discussion post that. But a city appointment can be made to CID. The last person we had was Natalie Martin, and she's no longer in that position. And so it creates a vacancy.
Madam Mayor, I just want to be clear, I'm not trying to create confusion, but it was the first time the nominee was act-, the candidate was actually nominated by the CID, but ratified by the council. Now, this sounds like we are actually making the nomination. Am I incorrect or correct on that?
Well, I don't think I was on.
Was I here when we made the first one?
I can't remember how we did it the first time, um, when, I can't remember when Natalie Martin's term started, and I know the CID started before I got here, so.
The reason why I'm challenging this is that the nature of the membership of the CID is basically those individuals who qualify to participate in the CID's activities. The CID is not a city-controlled or sponsored organization. It is controlled and established by the merchants in that particular area that wants the CID. That's why that whole issue about the continuation of the commercial sites in that CID came up. They couldn't skip around, they had to be continuous spaces. They are the ones who also made the contributions to the budget for the CID. Now, if I'm completely wrong, I accept being corrected, but going back to how the CID was started in the first place, it's a merchant membership to CID, driven process, driven function, not a city function. And I'm putting that out there because I think I'm right, and I want somebody who really knows to tell me I'm wrong.
So interim city attorney, do, are you aware of the appointment requirements for the CID? I think, again, that would have been information helpful to discuss, maybe at a work session, because there is an available appointment that we need to make, but we need to be aware of the process for a proper appointment.
Not immediately, uh, Madam Mayor. I'm just trying to research it quickly as Councilmember Cook was referencing it, but I'm happy to get you all something definite on that, uh, by next meeting.
Councilmember Robertson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to acknowledge, um, we had a phenomenal.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Robertson. We're in on a motion to, um, uh, I'm sorry. I, and I had, I caught that on all the other ones. I said everybody was in for council comments, and raise your hand if you had discussion. So that's on me. I'm sorry. Um, anyone else? Anyone else have any discussion on the motion that's on the floor? It sounds like there's a desire to get more information about how this appointment should be made. Councilmember Butler? Gordon, I see you're in, Councilmember Butler, you were in your council comments, so I'm not sure if that's for that, or?
It is for council comments, but we'll, we'll allow, we'll withdraw the motion to allow the city attorney to make, do some research.
Okay, so the motion's been withdrawn, and maybe if we can add that on the work session agenda on the 12th. Interim city attorney, you think you'll have some information by then?
I believe so.
Okay. All right, so, um, Madam City Clerk, if you can put on the work session agenda, Eritropolis CID's, City of East Point appointee, appointment, that's what you said.
And so.
Go ahead, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, I'll be very brief. Um, I do want to thank the volunteers for the ghost pool event. Um, I found it to be very informative to be able to go and see both pools. Uh, it's amazing at how one pool was significantly larger than another pool, and how it was in a shady area, and the other one, in the dead heat of the sun. It, it goes to show you that we've come a long way, and we still have a long way to go.
Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you, um, council comments. I wanted to, one, add to what Councilmember Renee stated about Ms. Cece, uh, winning the cook-off spaghetti, and I look forward to placing my order really soon, because I hear it's really delicious. So, um, I want to congratulate her again. Uh, further congratulations are extended to our very own East Point Tennis Spring Team for the men's, uh, category. They received second place in the Altamens C1 Division, so we just want to give a shout out to that. Um, one last reminder, this coming Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. until 12:00 noon, Councilmember Butler and I will be hosting the HOA Boot Camp, where the topics will be both squatters, as well as short-term rentals. These are definitely hot topics citywide, so that conference, I'm sorry, I'm caught up with conferences. That boot camp will be held this coming Saturday, uh, June 10th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Four Points by Sheraton Hotel. We look forward to seeing you all there, and look forward to seeing you next week during work session. Thank you.
Councilmember Robertson, and Councilmember Cook?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we're in city comments now, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, great.
You're right.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge that today is World Environmental Day, um, June 5th, 2023. And I'm happy just to, in that spirit, just to let you know, as we continue to make this city green, um, our last Green Team meetup, which was Meetup 6, Meetup 6. We met at the Conley Nature Trail, we hiked the trail, we had a phenomenal time walking this beautiful, beautiful, um, trail that we have. And also, in the middle of the trail, again, there's the Hank Aaron Champion tree, and I just was notified by Park and Rec that the plaque is, um, has been delivered. So be on the lookout later on, Parks and Rec's staff, I guess, will be planning something. But after we did our hike, we sat out and we painted nature. So we did an Eco Wellness Day Party, and, you know, it's really rough out here, and this mental wellness, it's very traumatic out here. And I'm going to make a quick pivot, because it is so traumatic. I want to tell the residents to first love yourself, love thy father, and love thy neighbor. Some of the shameless comments that you put on social media is not worthy of it. Show us some respect, we work part-time. Nobody is perfect, but please try to respect yourself and love yourself, because the hatred that I read out here, it breaks my heart. I'm going, the City of Atlanta had, uh, Cop City today. I was looking online at some of those vicious comments to these elected officials. Shame on everyone for that. We just came out of a Black Lives Matter, social justice, COVID debacle. Understand that nobody is perfect, but these shameless comments, they have to stop. Love yourself, because I sure love me. I yield, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Cook, and Councilmember Shropshire?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I briefly want to recap a comment that was made earlier. I don't want, I won't spend a lot of time on the details. First of all, everybody got a package today that I did not mention earlier, and it comes from the, uh, Pension Board. There's a lot of good information in there, but there's a particular package, and on page 14, on page 14, you will see information that you really need to be aware of, because that information was challenged tonight. And it has to do with the obligation the city has to support the pension plan. Something that we've been working on improving, oh, I, I think maybe for almost 14 years now. We're up to the point, and I've forgotten what the cover of this document looks like, but it's on page 14, and it shows as of December last year, the city's percentage of meeting their obligation to the pension plan, right now is at 91.8% of the 100% goal. When we really start tackling this monster, we were at 58%. Now, the one thing about pensions, you have to understand, pension participation is an obligation that a city has to include as part of the, how do we phrase it, minimum municipal obligation. Translated, that means city has pension plan, you don't meet your city obligation, state come in, take the city over, make sure you meet that obligation. Retirees will not suffer because the city doesn't meet their pension obligations. To comment tonight alluded to the fact that we have met enough of that obligation, and that extra money we were putting towards the pension plan can now go back into the general fund. And I'm requesting permission from the council, and I know you're going to grant it, that will allow me to spend a little bit more time with the city manager and the finance division, really understanding where we are right now with that, and what, what we are allowed to change. Now, the reason why I'm pushing this is our credit rating includes how well we are doing with making our pension contributions. The last official report we got from, I can't remember, was it Moody's or S&amp;P? But one of them actually missed, mentioned the fact that the only reason we didn't get a AAA rating that year is because our pension contribution wasn't at 100%. That was the only thing holding us back. Now, it might be five, six things this time around, okay? Some of them, I think, might show up. But having that show up, and we've gone this far, it's not something I think we want to fool around and lose, if we don't need to lose that. Now, just bringing that up, because I disagree with that comment. I don't believe we're going to have any money to pay with until we actually have met 100%. Pension plans are one of those things that once the city get into, you're going to have to swim, because if you fall behind, you're going to drown. You're going to have martial law declared on you. You're going to meet those benefit requirements, regardless of what it takes. It's no longer an option. And to know that credit rating, credit bureaus are paying attention to that, that's something I don't think we need to mess up. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Shropshire?
Thank you. Um, let me say thank you to, uh, no, let me start out by saying this. Five years. Five years started the Wednesday Wind Down. Long before some of the, well, actually, before any of these other events that popped up in the budget. Main Street Board has been doing events longer than anybody in this city. But what I find is, and, and I don't find it funny, I just find it nitpicking. I think some people rant just to do what they do, to always be against, to always go against, but never bring nothing tangible to the table. Now, three voted against the budget, so you both, you voted against your items that's in the budget, since the concern was to pause it or go through it. Let's see, will you counsel your events? If that's a concern, if you're really sincere about the budget. The ice skating rink, the three-on-three basketball, the kids thing, the thing for the senior citizens ball, silver fox ball, I can go on and on. But let's see if any of that's going to be counsel, because we've been doing this for five years. Five years. Five long years. And the Main Street Board has been having events longer than that. And it has not been a problem, until some on council decided that, for whatever reason. And I yield for Councilmember Comments.
You have any other comments, Councilmember?
No, I'll wait.
No, I'm, I'm saying, so once, once I go to Councilmember Comments, then that'll end Councilmember com-, com-, council comments, and then I'll make some comments, and I'll see if we have any executive session, I.
Okay.
So I want you to, if, if you have anything else you want to say, go ahead and say.
I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm glad to move forward, because I'm tired of all the back and forth. I'm tired of the, the games, I'm tired of the shenanigans. I'm just tired. I'm done, and I'll wait.
Councilmember Comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for, um, all those who attended, um, the council meeting, uh, this evening, either in person or via, um, some form of, um, social media. Um, just wanted to, um, just briefly respond to, uh, what was stated. I know it seems like a lot of times we have a lot of distinction here, um, amongst the council members, and we aren't going to always agree, um, on everything. And just as I said from the very beginning, day one, I've never been against, um, Wednesday Wind Down. I've never had anything against it. I think you've created a phenomenal brand, I'm with it, I've always said that. Uh, why we can't, you know, seem to be on the same page about certain things, that's neither here nor there. As long as we continue to be respectful of one another.
Come on, so.
With regards to, um.
Just make your comments.
I'm going to make my comments, I'm going to make my comments. And the thing about it is, so, yes, I did look at the budget, and for the, um, ice skating rink, that $155 item that was on there. An email was sent to. No, uh, an, an item, an email was sent to, um, the city manager over a month ago, pulling that item. So I have gone through, and I have taken into consideration, you know, some of the things that are on there. Um, so, to that point, I am putting in the work. No, I didn't join council just to nitpick at you. And, um, really, at the end of the day, I mean, I've wanted to try and work with you on some things. Whether you choose to, um, accept my help, that's totally up to you. But just in the spirit of moving forward and doing positive things for the city, you know, I just hope we, you know, we can just come to some sort of happy medium, and, um, work together to bring the city forward. Again, thank everyone for coming out, um, this evening. Let's continue, um, to pray, uh, for our youth. Again, um, last weekend, the, um, Again, um, last weekend, the, um, Ms. Bria's student at Mays High School, she was, um, she lost her life due to, um, senseless nonviolence. So I am again looking forward, uh, to, uh, being able to participate, looking, looking forward to participate with the, um, nonviolence, uh, Stop the Violence, um, events that you all are having, um, Councilmember Renee and Bailey. Uh, because it is, uh, definitely a, a serious problem that we do have with our youth, um, and the gun violence. So again, let's just continue to lift her, uh, family up in prayer. Again, thank everyone for coming this evening.
Alrighty, um, Councilmember Cummings, you said a hundred and fifty-five dollars. I think you meant a hundred and fifty-five thousand. But you're saying that you told, sent an email to staff to remove that, so. Okay, thanks for that update. Um, as it relates to my comments, um, I mentioned earlier that June is Pride Month, National Pride Month. We proclaimed that several times in the city and just eventually just said June is Pride Month in the city. Um, but for the last two years, we also have flown the Pride flag and lit up City Hall, um, in recognition of the Stonewall riots, um, that occurred June twenty-eighth through July third in nineteen sixty-nine. Um, and those riots served as a catalyst for the gay rights movement and led to the creation of various gay activist groups in the United States and around the world. So I'm hoping that we will be doing that again this year. Again, we generally do that. Oh, they're already up? I'm sorry, I hadn't even been in the front of the building this week. So the flags are up, well, we'll be lighting City Hall though. We're lighting them every night? We're lighting it every night? Okay, well, then I don't, thank you, Mr., um, Swain.
Oh, I see the flag.
It was on the flag pole, not just on, okay, we'll talk. But, thank you. And, um, thank you for bringing the Possum Show back again, this, that will be this Saturday. What's the hours? Seven PM to ten PM. At City Hall on our city lawn. Um, so come out and celebrate in, um, our community, in our LGBTQIA+ community. Um, the Healthy Point has been going strong. I believe we're in week ten, and we've had a number of people who've earned the six-week incentive, which was a East Point insulated tote bag. Um, the, so they participated in one event for six weeks. For eight weeks on one activity, they received a signature Healthy Point, um, gym bag. And then for ten weeks at two activities a week, the signature Yeti, um, Healthy Point Yeti. And then the grand prize of three activities for twelve weeks, the two hundred dollar gift card and a, um, healthy dinner catered by their celebrity chef. Last year, we had, um, Tri-Cities Culinary Department catering, it was amazing. Um, as well as recognition and counsel. And I hear in the previous years, I think our maximum was like three people who reached that. But I think we've almost tripled that. Um, we're quite definitely, I hear around eight. So very exciting, we have two more weeks to go, so that number might increase. Um, we actually, um, Morehouse School of Medicine and our Community Advisory Board received permission from the Smithsonian to have a private screening of Oprah Winfrey's documentary, The Color of Care, which explores the racial inequalities in the healthcare system. And, um, interviews families of color who lost loved ones to COVID-nineteen and the harrowing experiences their family members face trying to access care before they died. And so as a part of our, um, finale events on June seventeenth, um, we'd like to use council chambers for that private screening. It will be open to the community. Um, and then we will have, um, lunch, so some signature, um, picnic baskets as well, Healthy Point's picnic basket, as well as blanket, blankets to go out on our city lawn to have lunch and enjoy the market as well as prepare for the Juneteenth celebration that will be happening, um, that evening. So that's a day of events, but we'd like to use council chambers on June seventeenth for the private screening of the Oprah Winfrey Color Care documentary that they received permission from Smithsonian Channel to have a private screening.
Is there a motion on that?
You gotta make it.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to use the chambers, the city council chambers for the documentary movie, uh, on June, uh, seventeenth.
It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries, thank you for that. Um, I'm gonna look at my notes. Um, couple other things before I ask if we have any, um, executive session items tonight. Hopefully that'll be rhetorical, but we'll keep praying. Um, thank you to everyone who came to the meeting tonight. Um, those who shared during the public hearing on the budget. Um, I will say again, um, that our charter requires adoption of the budget on June first. And what wasn't noted, that it says if council fails, if it fails to adopt the budget by this date, then you can go, then amounts appropriated for current operation for the current fiscal year shall be deemed adopted for the ensuing fiscal year on a month-to-month basis. The indication of failure to do what the council is required to do indicates the preference and actually the requirement that we adopt by June. Because adopting a budget by the first month, Monday in June, allows us to plan. It relates to our property taxes and making sure we have things in place to be able to get those allocations and have those bills go out in November. I think they go in October, November. And when you adopt the budget halfway into a fiscal year in December, I mean, that's even behind when property taxes are supposed to be collected. Um, as it relates to the local option sales tax, those are renegotiated every ten years. And actually, our population, um, increased during, um, our census in twenty twenty, unlike the decrease in twenty-ten. Uh, we increased by thirteen point eight percent, which gave us a little bit better position from a population perspective as it relates to the entire county. And everybody had to reset their percentages that they're getting to ensure that we all at least continue to get what we are getting. So the, um, negotiations that I participated resulted in us at least getting a little over twelve million dollars per year over the next ten years, and in fact, even an increase. And so, you know, as this administration continues to move forward in a manner of decency and order, um, and facts, and ensuring that we educate and equip and empower our residents to make their own decisions and conclusions by sharing information and helping residents understand how to access that information. Um, I appreciate all of those who, um, are being engaged and informed. Um, I echo some of the sentiments of Councilmember Robertson around, um, just the level of sheer hate that is being communicated and conveyed um, in social media, other mediums. And I, I, as I think about it, sometimes I don't really blame the people that are making the comments. I blame the people who are providing them with information that they know is not true. Um, and then they, then base their opinions or their decisions based upon false information. So I encourage you to fact-check, um, and make sure you have actual, the actual information before, um, just taking someone's word for it and then getting into speech that is very, very disrespectful. Um, and yes, we, um, it's not about agreeing to everything that we do, but we can agree to disagree without being disagreeable. And we can always respect each other, um, regardless of our position. So, um, do we have any executive session items for tonight? Oh, I have one appointment.
Yes, three, um, updates.
What types of items?
Litigation, litigation.
Three litigation? Mr. King?
Nope.
Oh, I don't have none, I'm just gonna make a motion.
Okay, um, I, I need to make the twenty-twenty-three HR committee appointments. And so I'd like to appoint, um, Councilmember Cook, Councilmember Bailey, and Councilmember Robertson to the HR committee. I get a motion to confirm.
I'd like to make a motion to confirm.
There's second. It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion?
Discussion.
Councilmember, uh, Butler.
So does that mean that Councilwoman Cummings, Councilwoman Gordon, and Councilmember Butler won't be appointed to a committee?
That means they won't be appointed to the HR committee.
No, there, the committee appointments were made, supposed to be made at the first of the year. That committee was not done. And so everybody else was placed on committees except for those three people at this time. That's what it would be.
There's another committee, the Blighted Property Task Force Committee.
I hear my question.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we have three litigation, nothing from city manager, anything from council. All right, we need the motion to recess into executive session for three litigation items.
Motion to recess into executive session for three litigation.
Moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries, we're in recess.
Motion to reconvene, second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, can I get a motion to approve executive session meeting minutes?
Motion to- Motion to approve executive session meeting minutes.
That's so moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I also need to, um, make an appointment to the Blighted Property Task Force. So appoint Councilmember Butler, Councilmember Gordon, and Councilmember Cummings. And get a motion to confirm that appointment.
So moved.
It's there second. It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Mr. Cook.
Councilmember Cook.
Press your button, go on on.
Madam Mayor, all things considered, I move that tonight's meeting be adjourned.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Good night, East Corners.